Hello, Mr. Jones Chance. Didn't see you come in.
Hello.
Counsel, just a reminder to say your physical location when I call your name. Councilmember Wilcoxen.
President Ypsilanti, Washington County.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown. Councilmember Somerville.
President Ypsilanti, Washington County.
Mayor Richardson.
Present.
Your physical location?
I'm sorry, Ypsilanti, Washington County.
Councilmember Morgan.
Present. City of Ypsilanti, County of Washington, in the year of our Lord 2021.
Councilmember Simmons. I see she's joining right now. Mr. Jones Chance.
President, City of Ypsilanti County, Washington.
Councilmember Simmons.
Present, attending virtually from the City of Ypsilanti, Washington County.
With six present, there is a quorum.
All right, thank you.
I make a motion to use Mayor Pro Tem.
All right. It's been moved and supported to excuse. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Helling, it looks like Joe wants to get in, get in on the action.
Can I see Mayor Pro Tem Brown? Could you give your physical location, please?
Yes, sorry. Ypsilanti, Michigan, Washington County.
Thank you. Counsel, next item on the agenda is agenda approval.
Their motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Counsel, next item is the public comment section. I did forward you a public comment earlier by email, and I will start the timer as I read it. It is from Larry Yap. Larry Yap, North Huron Street, Ypsilanti, on May 18, 2021. I am fully aware our city council doesn't care about the facts I have documented or what I have to say about the North Huron Alley. Nevertheless, it is necessary council members are reminded the city's negligence resulted in the conflict and the lawsuit. It is also critical council is on the record refusing to hold staff accountable for failing to enforce some ordinances. You may not be aware, a restraining order was issued three years ago after numerous violations by Jackson cleaners. I was forced to file a motion to enforce the mutual restraining order. January 31, 2021, railroad ties obstructing the alley and triangle. March 16, 2021, railroad ties were still in the alley and triangle. Gray line marks the alley and is outside Pappas property line. April 5, 2021, Pappas responded in court, denied they had violated the restraining order. The denial forced the judge to do a site visit. The site visit was scheduled for April 9, 2021. April 8, 2021, Pappas measuring the day before the judge's visit. April 9, 2021, judge ordered railroad ties out of the triangle. Note, the cattle gates and pot signs are still hanging over the property line into the alley. Why is this important? Pappas continues to ignore city ordinances, ignore property lines, and attempts to interfere others' rights to use public alley. As of 2018, ordinance officer Jackson stated his opinion of who paid for instructions rather addressing the obstructions as ordinances violations. As the pictures clearly show, the ordinance officer is still not monitoring and dealing with Pappas ongoing instructions in the alley. Because the judge was forced to shut down violations, the ordinance officer should have addressed since 2016. Article 3, encroachments, Section 9482, encroachments prohibited. It shall be unlawful for any person to maintain or allow any encroachments onto or into any city street, sidewalk, right-of-way, easement, park, and public place, except as provided by this code, Code 1983. Additional refusals to enforce ordinance, the sign violates the city's sign ordinance. The cattle gate was installed without permit. The cattle gate was cited by the HDC in December 2019, but requested application was never filed. That is it for that. Now we'll be moving on to the, those in attendance. You'll have three minutes to make statements to counsel. The first person to have their hand raised is Renee Echols. I'll allow them to speak now, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, counsel. I just wanted to, my name is Renee Echols. I'm a resident of the 3rd Ward. I have been on the Police Advisory Commission since August last year. I'm just here to to bring to everyone's attention that the council, the commission rather, has a new chair as of March, which you may all have heard that I'm really excited about Heather Berkowitz, who has a background in law enforcement, has experience with that, and I think is really going to be a great chair. It is already working on some new stuff. There's quite a large agenda for this upcoming meeting on May 27, so I'm really advocating for council members to attend, and if you have constituents who have expressed concerns or have thoughts about policing in the city, I know there's a wide variety of opinions about that, and the commission really can't do its job if we don't hear from the public. So I really want to emphasize council members to reach out to constituents and inform them that this resource is here to attend the meetings if this is something that they really care about. And I also know that, as I said, there's going to be quite a lot on the agenda this coming meeting and including kind of further discussions about what the purpose of the commission is and making it more clear what the function of the commission is. So that's really important because I think that's been unclear, particularly in the last several months as we've gone through the pandemic. We've also discussed at length the prospective hiring of a social worker in the police department, and I think that the commission would really like to have a crucial role in that hiring process if possible. So that's another thing I wanted to bring to the council's attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your service on that commission. Appreciate it.
If any other members of the attendees list would like to make comment, please raise your hand now. You can do so by the button in the bottom right there. Seeing none of it's okay with counsel, we can move on to the next section. And that first section is a mental health presentation, and there are two speakers here from Washington County Health and Human Services. Craig Washington, and there was another individual on.
I believe Judy Thurman was supposed to be joining us. I'm not sure if she's on the call yet, though. I can begin if we're up. So, you know, I wasn't sure exactly what information you guys wanted, so I'm going to try to keep it quick because I know there's not a lot of time. My understanding is that the council was interested in how mental health has been affected, the mental health of residents has been affected over the course of the pandemic in kind of a more general sense. Some of the events that have happened in the country over the past year. Obviously, that's a pretty broad topic, but I wanted to stop and see if people had any specific concerns or questions before I start.
I might add here, I can do it now or later, but I've been in talks with the Trish Cortez and Leah Mills, the Director of CMH. And Leah Mills is the Chair of the Black Lives Matter Committee, and I don't know if they call it committee or group.
Task force.
Task force, thank you, with at CMH. And they have been in work, and they have planned a series of community conversations to be held via Zoom. And they had set the first one for tomorrow night, and because the Corner Health Center also has a mental health conversation tomorrow night, we postponed it. And Leah and Trish will be getting back to me on the dates that we will need. They're going to have, I believe it's a series of three that they're going to do. And since they, we couldn't have it to tomorrow night, I ask if they would possibly either one of them, and they weren't able, so they sent Dr. Craig and also Judy Thurman to just give us a, just a brief talk on mental health. May is Mental Health Month. And to also set the stage for the community conversations or town hall, if we want to call them. Hopefully, all of council will encourage their constituents to join in, so. But anyway, that's just to lay a little bit of foundation of why Dr. Craig and Judy are here this evening. So, thank you, Dr. Craig.
Sure, and just to give you a little bit of my background, so I'm a psychiatrist. I've been working for community mental health in Washington County, really since 2007 or so, and I've been primarily based out of the counter building here in Ypsilanti, so I'm pretty familiar with the community. Actually, lived in Ypsilanti Township for many years. So, just to give you some information, obviously, mental health has been something I think that's been overlooked for many years. Something that affects really everyone, this community and others. And, you know, when you look at the pandemic, it's affected everyone's mental health, I think, just from the social isolation. Look at adults, look at kids not being able to go to school and see their friends. And one thing a lot of people don't realize from a medical perspective is that COVID itself actually has some direct mental health effects, and I think we haven't paid as much attention to. It can actually have some longer-term psychiatric effects. So, I think it's really important for us all to engage and have these discussions and remove some of the stigma that's been attached to mental illness and encourage people to seek help if they need it. And really encourage everyone who might have any concerns about having any sort of mental health issues to really engage and talk about it. There are resources available. CMH is one, and that's not the only one by far. So, one other thing I do, actually, I spend a couple of half-days a month at Hope Clinic. It's kind of an in-house consultant to the docs there, provide some health services there. We actually have an integrated health initiative, so several of our psychiatrists actually do work. And some of our other mental health professionals work in different clinics around town to actually, just to help and provide all the services that we can. So, I do think it's important, especially once again looking at the state of the country. And I should also mention, I'm part of this Black Lives Matter task force. When we look at what's happened in the African-American community in particular, and some of the protests and some of the things that are changing, really also has had a huge impact on, on health, not just of African-Americans, but our country in our.
May I make a statement? I'm wondering, based on, when it comes to mental health, it was basically defined as a person's condition with regard to their psychological and emotional well-being. And when we're talking about condition, like a person's condition versus, I guess, the straw. Because we mentioned COVID, we mentioned some of this, we can mention poverty, we can mention houselessness, we can mention just pressures of society. So, now we're talking about a state, like, or is it, at what point does the condition get, does the condition affect the psychological and mental health or vice versa? A person who has all the normal things deeped on in society, and then the extra stuff. So, at what point? So, when we're talking about these things, we're talking about some types of relief coping mechanisms, some type of, I guess you can reverse some of the effects, but some tangible ways that, and some separate ways, but some things, again, I'm sure that women and females go through that, that creates stress and mental health things that males don't. So, I know it's so, what kind of strategies as a city, when we're talking about COVID, Black Lives Matter, again, homelessness, things of that nature that increases the mixture and the mixing pot for crisis?
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a great question and a great point. And when I look at mental health or mental illness, I really look at it as three intersecting circles, kind of a Venn diagram. Now, one circle being environmental factors, so things like, like I said, homelessness, environmental stress, you know, job loss, divorce, family strain, et cetera. Another circle being biological factors, whether you have a genetic predisposition, other medical conditions, that sort of thing. The third circle being just psychological factors, and that, you know, can be a whole number of things, but it's really when all three of these circles intersect that people have mental health problems, right? Sometimes you have more from one circle than another, but a lot of times you have things contributing from all, all of those circles. I think as a city, we can kind of approach things from a couple of different directions. One, the environmental circle is really important, whether it's, you know, meeting people's basic needs, whether they have issues with, with housing or food or, you know, access to different resources, I think those are things that we can work on from a government perspective. You know, I think looking at those other perspectives, you know, the psychological perspective, I think it's important to just encourage conversation. Right? Talk to people, give people venues to express themselves, whether it's a venue like this, and I know things are difficult in the age of the pandemic because everything's done virtually as opposed to in person. I'm more of a fan of talking to people in person if I can, but I know it is kind of what it is at this point. So, I think encouraging the conversations, the town halls that we're planning, this community engagement, I think is really important. Mayor, I think you're muted.
All right. Yes, any other questions or comments, or you can continue on with what you had prepared for us.
So, you know, I think it's important for us to, you know, engage, engage residents as much as we can, whether that's the town halls that we're planning from the community mental health perspective, or just if you're interacting with the constituents and people seem to be struggling for whatever reason, encourage them to reach out. CMH, and I'm not sure if everyone has the number, the direct number to CMH, but I can sort of give that out if anyone wants to pass it on, but just the 734-544-3000 number is an important resource. You know, we have a crisis team that works 24 hours a day, seven days a week. If anyone has really even any questions about mental health, that's one place that they can call to get connected with resources that could be helpful for them. It's open to everyone in Washington County. So, and once again, I don't want to, I don't want to take up too much time from the.
I have a question for you.
Sure, sure.
How has CMH been seeing and treating people during the pandemic, during the times when face-to-face was not always available?
Well, you know, that's a good question. So, we've, we've taken the approach that a lot of medical clinics have. So, a lot of appointments have been virtual, so similar to this format, which once again, I'm not a huge fan of, but it's better than no contact. Some of our, some of our consumers don't have access to the technology that allows them to do this. So, we've had to do some phone appointments, which once again, is not ideal, but some contact is better than none. And we actually have been seeing people in person, some, especially in recent weeks and months, more than we were at the beginning of the pandemic. For a number of reasons, some people actually have to be seen in person, so we take the appropriate precautions and have them come to the office. Or, you know, in some cases, we'll actually go to people's, people's homes, depending on the situation.
Thank you.
So, you know, in general, we try to meet people where they're at and kind of, you know, what they're comfortable with, what they have access to, what works best for them.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. I have a question, and again, if you don't have the answer to this, that's totally fine, but I was wondering about the collaboration that we know is happening between CMH and Sheriff's Department, the police department.
Yep.
Talk to us maybe about how effective that has been, what is, if you know what the experience is for the social workers that are going out on some of these calls?
That's a great question, and I don't have specific numbers as far as like, you know, has it reduced any particular number of incidents? My understanding, and I haven't talked to the social workers that have been, that are directly embedded yet myself, but my understanding is that it's actually been quite helpful for both CMH and for the Sheriff's Department, right? You know, because when we look at first responders, a lot of times we talk about first responders, whether it be use fire, EMS, but mental health first response also is very important. A lot of times, police are put in a position where they are mental health first responders. So, I think it's really helpful to have the social workers embedded. My understanding is that it's quite helpful. The Sheriff's Department's got a lot out of it. We've gotten a lot from it. It's been a success. Now, as far as like civic examples, I don't have that for you right now, but from what I understand, it's actually been quite helpful.
And if we wanted to, because I think you heard during the public comment that we are working on bringing on a social worker to our department. So, if I wanted to get more, like additional information specifically from workers around what their experience
Right.
and how that has been, who do you think would be the best person to talk to about that?
That's a great question. If, I'm not sure if Judy is going to join, she would be a good person to talk to about that if she pops on the call. If not, I can connect you, I think, well, Trish Cortez has been pretty responsive. I think she might be someone to talk to. Brandy Hagaman would also be someone you could speak to. And if I can figure out who it is that has actually been going out on the calls, I will connect you with those names as well.
That's who I would really like to talk, would be those, the frontliners. We could think that that perspective is important as we try to craft the role here as well.
I agree.
Yeah, so that we're not, you know, maybe making mistakes or things that we could avoid to start. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, or? Mr. Morgan.
Like, especially with frontliners or people like law enforcement and fire, is there is there a working tool or model in which the people who are on the front line have their mental health evaluated? So much pressure, being on the, having to experience these things, pretty work overloaded, whatnot?
That's a great question, and it might actually be a better question for, for the Sheriff's Department or the Fire Department. I don't know if there is a standard. No, it's not something that I've been involved with. I mean, there should be. I mean, one thing I have been trained in is the best name for it, sort of crisis debriefing. So, you know, if there's like a sort of a, you know, a major incident, a big fire, or, you know, a mass shooting, or some like incident like that, about how you bring people in and sort of debrief and discuss what's happened, but as far as like the day-to-day trauma that a lot of our first-line responders are are exposed to, I'm not sure if there is a model for, you know, making sure they get the mental health, I think.
I say that because us as council and the mayor, I mean, the last year and a half, we've been through some really trying times with our city, with some really high-profile things in which we didn't get debriefed on, on mental health, where we stand, how to de-escalate, how to reconfigure the information, how to process this, has been thing after thing after thing after thing, and, which is, we expect that because I think we are frontliners by definition, and essential. So, I, I, I'm just wondering what that looked like for other people who actually are on the ground doing some of the interfacing with the I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind some debriefing from some of the big things.
Well, you know, and if you actually are interested in that, we do have, you know, several people, several teams who are actually trained in debriefing. So, if you, if you guys didn't want to set up some sort of debriefing, we certainly can do that. So, that's something.
Yeah, we've lost the city manager, we've lost the mayor, we've lost, we've done some high-profile this, this is separate, it's been some, some things that we could have, did a good job of de-escalating the debriefing as a group of people that I think we may, can find opportunities in the future, because, again, there's some things I'm feeling and thinking about that I think would make sense to get out, but that's just a side note. Thank you so much, Mr. Washington.
I want to jump in really fast to respond to Anthony, actually, because that's something that I thought about with council as well. And being that this is the work that I do in Wayne County, one of the things that I keep thinking about for us is some type of reflective debrief or reflective supervision model that we could utilize because we do have things that impact us daily quite often, and we are vicariously experiencing things that the constituents share with us, so that we witness, you know, that we receive from our police reports and all these different things, and we don't have a place. And it has been something top-tier on my list of things to think about for us as well. But as far as like in my line of, at my agency, for instance, we do have those spaces where we do reflective consults and reflective supervisions to debrief the experiences, the things that my staff and I are seeing and witnessing on a day-to-day basis. And that is an evidence-based practice and model that is honestly proven to work.
I support that, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you both. Thank you. Mr. Wilcoxen, do you have something for us? Looked like you were saying something.
Oh, I was agreeing. That's great. I mean, you know, I wasn't really thinking about, about counsel when we got into this conversation. I'm reading a book about, about bias in police forces and, and you know, debriefing the police and, you know, having social workers on staff for debriefing police for, for that kind of engagement. But with the, with the pandemic, it's a whole nother thing, but the thinking about, you know, we all have other jobs. We have, you know, this, there's, there's certainly stresses involved with this. And, and as, you know, Mr. Morgan pointed out, as, as things kind of hit the fan, you know, that's, that's a set of stresses for the rest of us to kind of cope with and help our constituents deal with as well. So, but I was thinking more of, you know, the police and the fire department and, you know, other folks actually out on the street too, so. But, yeah, I think, I think Mayor Pro Tem's idea is awesome.
Yeah, I would encourage that. I mean, we certainly do debriefing at, even at CMH, if there's, you know, something that happens, you know, suicide, some other incident. It makes sense to bring a team together and actually do a debriefing, so it sounds like you guys have been through a lot as well, so that's certainly something that I would.
I think what I'm hearing, city managers, that maybe, and also, Kim, that maybe this is something that we need to look into and providing for, for council, and not just for council, but for staff also. Because many of the things that did happen and went on also affected staff. So, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for putting that forth, and Mr. Morgan for bringing it up. But if we could ask, you know, for that to be looked into and the possibility of arranging something, so it would be appreciated. Kim, if you don't mind, I know we do have, is it, I'm not sure the, the name of the company that we have where our employees can go to for this kind of service. If you could expand on that just a little bit.
Sir, we have an employee assistance program that's free to all of our employees. And I believe council can utilize the service as well, but it's through a company called Ulyant, and you'll see that especially this month, about once a week, I'm sending out information from them regarding Mental Health Month. And so, it's a completely anonymous service, and I have a lot of information in my office if anybody would like additional information.
Okay, thank you. I have been noticing for some time, I think this past year, you've been sending out emails from them and different things that they were presenting for us to look at and some exercises, and thank you for that. So, if you would continue to send those, but if we would all avail ourselves to the, to those articles that she sends us, but also if you would, please see if it, if it covers and includes council, that we could get the direct services from them. So, thank you. Anyone else? Any other questions or comments for Dr. Washington? Thank you, city manager, for bringing that forth. Hey, Dr. Washington, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
Yes, so.
And feel free to contact me if there's anything, other questions or that come up later.
All right, thank you, and enjoy and have a fantastic evening. It looks really pretty out there.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, appreciate you.
Very much.
All right, Mr. Helling.
Counsel, next item on the agenda is a proclamation designating May as Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas mental illness is thought to be caused by various genetic and environmental factors, and whereas mental health includes our emotional, psychological, and social well-being, it affects how we think, feel, and act. It also affects how we handle stress, relate to others, and make choices. And whereas mental health is foundational to our wellness, allows us to care for ourselves and others, and make and make valuable contributions to Michigan's communities. And whereas according to Mayo Clinic, mental illness is common. About one in five adults has mental illness in any given year. Mental illness can begin at any age, but most cases begin earlier in life. And whereas mental illness can be long lasting or temporary. And whereas mental illness is known to be a leading cause of, of disability. If left untreated, it can potentially cause severe emotional behavior and physical health problems. And whereas in Michigan, nearly 4.5% of adults with a serious mental health conditions such as schizophrenia, bipolar disorder and major depression. But only 43.6% of adults with mental illness receive any form of treatment from either a public system or private provider. And whereas approximately one in five Michigan youths have at least one mental health condition in 2017. 13% reported having a depressive episode. Fewer than half have been able to access care. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has been a reminder of the importance of integrating mental health into preparedness and response plans for public health emergencies. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has significantly contributed to mental health challenges in children, youth, adults and elders in Michigan. And whereas a various challenge include isolation, loss of income, fear and bereavement. And whereas there is no sure way to prevent mental illness, however, taking the necessary steps to control stress, pay attention to warning signs, get routine medical care, get help when needed, take good care of yourself may keep, may help keep your symptoms under control. And whereas good mental health is critical to the well-being of our families, communities, schools and businesses. And whereas greater public awareness about mental illness can change negative attitudes and behaviors towards people with mental illnesses. Now therefore, I Lois Allen Richardson, Mayor of the City of Ypsilanti hereby proclaim May 2021 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the City of Ypsilanti.
Is there a motion?
It's a proclamation.
A proclamation, thank you, thank you.
But I would move if I could.
Thinking resolution, so thank you. All right, thank you, uh, Mr. Wilcox, and appreciate that.
Of it.
Okay. Okay. Um, Mr. Halanga, next on the agenda.
Council, next on the agenda is, uh, a public hearing, uh, for fiscal year 2021, 2022 through fiscal year 2027 through 2028 Capital Improvements Plan, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti. Whereas the Charter of the City of Ypsilanti requires that council adopt a capital improvements program on an annual basis. And whereas the Planning Enabling Act requires the council adopt a capital improvements program on an annual basis. And whereas the City of Ypsilanti is pursuing renewal of its redevelopment ready certification from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, which likewise requires that a capital improvements plan be adopted. And now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council hereby adopt the Capital Improvements Plan for fiscal year 2021, 2022 through fiscal year 2027 through, I'm sorry, 2027, 2028.
So moved. Support.
Been moved and supported. That we open, now open the public hearing.
Um, if any of the members of the public would like to make, uh, comment specific to the capital improvements plan, please raise your hand now and you'll have three minutes to address council. Seeing no hands raised, go ahead and read the resolution to close the public hearing. Resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that a public hearing for the Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year 2021, 2022 through fiscal year 2027, 2028 be officially closed.
So moved.
Or.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion, uh, is carried. Now, discussion on the, um, on the motion itself. Or I see, uh, Ms. Westler here, did you have something for us, please? Thank you.
Nothing new tonight. I did just want to point out that this is the same capital improvements plan that you saw before you, uh, a couple of weeks ago at your last meeting. Nothing's changed. This is just for the adoption.
All right, thank you.
Let's have a comment.
Mr. Morgan?
Uh, my only comment is I am so grateful that I get to have a lens on something that's so extensive that will carry the city over the years. And, um, it takes a lot of responsibility. I'm sure just want to thank the staff for, for all their input and just having, uh, trust in their vision and their cohesiveness and just the methodology of what we're all trying to do to move the city forward. So I'm grateful that I have a say and just have a sight and work with so many people that's looking to move Ypsilanti forward. So, uh, I support it wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Halanga, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
With seven yes votes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Council moving on to the next item, the consent. Resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that the following items be approved. Resolution number 2021 dash zero, one zero two approving the minutes of May 4th, 2021. Resolution number 2021 dash one zero three approving appointments for boards and commissions.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Roll call, please. Was there any discussion?
No discussion on the consent.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Council moving on to the next item. Resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that the proposed ordinance entitled 2021 dash 2022 tax levy ordinance be approved on second and final reading.
I'll move.
Support.
Been moved and supported, discussion. Questions, comments, Mr. Um, Bestabika, did you have anything for us?
Nothing, Mayor. This is the same, um, literature that was presented in our previous meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no hands for questions or comments, uh, Mr. Halanga, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Council moving on to the next item, resolution number 2021 dash one zero five. Resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that an ordinance entitled an ordinance to amend budget appropriations by department and major organizational unit for the fiscal year 2020 dash 2021 and 2021 dash 2022 be approved on second and final reading.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to amend, uh, the budget, uh, commensurate with the information that, uh, Christopher Jacobs had, uh, submitted. Um, there's a, a budget amendment in there for $60,000 for the, uh, Penn Dam. $50,000 of that is, uh, required for the, the property, um, survey and title work, um, that OHM is, is going to be doing. And then the other 10,000 of that is for, um, to hire Woods and Watts as a, uh, uh, public engagement consultant for, um, for the dam removal project. Um, I know that, uh, Summer Woods is, is here for a discussion later on. Um, but, um, I want to make that amendment to, to get that $60,000 put in. Um, you know, we committed $500,000 to this and we knew that we were going to have to spend money on the, uh, on the legal part of the, the land part of that. Um, and we were going to have to, to hire a facilitator for the, for the public engagement. Uh, we took in a number of, uh, uh, proposals and looked at those. And this proposal is far and away, uh, more comprehensive, um, and of more benefit to the, to the city than the other proposals we had, so.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, discussion for the, on the amendment.
Council, uh, council, was that councilmember Simmons that supported that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is that 60,000 coming out of that 500,000?
Right.
So is it broken down to 500,000? We know what, well, whether we know what all it entails that we're spending it on, that's going to be one itemized line budget in the 500,000.
Well, that's what, yeah, that, that is the first, uh, debit from that account. Um, going, as we stand now, I mean, the Huron River Watershed Council has gotten a grant from the DNR and is, is applying for more grants. So all the study that goes into, uh, you know, looking at the concerns that the community had before we, um, can move on the dam. Um, that's being funded a lot through the DNR grant. They're also looking at other funding, uh, for that. Um, when it comes time for the actual, in a year or two, when, when all that stuff is taken care of and we've met all the requirements that, uh, the state has for, for determining, you know, the condition of the, the sediments and the bridges and all that stuff. Deconstruction of the dam, um, would come from that as well. Um, but there are also other, uh, sources of funding that we'll have to look at in terms of grants. So that $500,000 basically goes towards, uh, matching funds for those grants. Oftentimes those grants require a 10% match or something like that. And so we've done that with the, the current DNR grant. Um, but that matching actually came in terms of, uh, staff time. So it didn't actually take, uh, funding out of that $500,000. It just, uh, you know, when people accounted for their time, um, that came out of their, you know, basically their hourly rates for that time. So, um, this, this is the first, um, expenditures that, that would come out of that, that money, so.
And just as, we were sent those different bids, did, did you see the bids? Were they, were they?
So this is, so this is below the, the, um, the threshold for, uh, for those to come to council. Um, and so Christopher Jacobs was the point person on that and he solicited bids and I got to see the bids. Um, folks from, there were a couple of other people that, um, Commissioner, uh, Givens looked at those. But this was below the threshold for actually having to come to council. But because, um, we're putting up the, uh, the, the money for the OHM, we thought it was, uh, the best transparency to have all of that out there. So you knew how that money was being spent. So if it's below, you know, $25,000 is at the purview of the, the city manager. And, uh, you know, the, um, department heads can have a, have a limit as well, but it, it, it doesn't trigger coming to us. But, um, since this, since the OHM was big enough to come to us, it got put together as a package.
And my last question, Reagan, the money for the 500,000 you set aside, is that just, what fund is, is that in? And when we take the 60,000 out, if we take it out, it'd be itemized and it'd reflect four, six, um, five, four, 40? Like, where's it being kept and how are we, when it's being spent, how are we correcting it from being, you know, when it's being taken out?
So what we do is, this is part of our committed fund balance out of that, uh, 8.3 million that we have. So we did commit 500,000 and every time we make a drawdown, uh, like for this one, so that 500,000 of that commitment to fund balance will now be decreased down to four, 40.
Thank you, I have no more questions. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Reagan.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Jacobs, did you have something you wanted to share with us?
No, my ears were ringing and, uh, if you had any questions about the selection process, I wanted to be available and for you to know, I'm here.
Yeah, I'd like to say that, um, I did attend meetings with the steering committee, Mr. Wilcox and then, and Mr. Jacobs. Where we talked about those that bid it, and I did agree that that, that that company was the better one, uh, to serve us for our public engagement.
Thank you. City manager, appreciate that. Any other questions, discussion? Okay, seeing none. Would you call the roll, please, Kalinga?
Council, would you?
Oh, wait, no, 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 I'm sorry. I do have, uh, something that I wanted to, uh, oh, well, this, we're voting on the amendment, yes, please call the roll.
Council, would you like me to read the amendment prior to calling the roll?
Yes.
All right. Motion to amend the budget to include $60,000 to hire a facilitator for public engagement regarding the removal of the Penn Dam that I.
That also includes the, the majority of that cost is for the, the title and survey work from OHM for the, the easements along the empowerment.
So act, the actual cost of the, uh, facilitators is 10,000, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. So go ahead and, um, read the roll on the amendment. Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yeah.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And thank you for your work, uh, on that, Mr. Wilcox. I know we talked about, uh, when we looked at, uh, the budget before, a, um, putting in a race for, uh, city council. Does council have to act on that, um, specifically Mr. Barr, following the, or, or city manager? Uh, does council have to put that forth specifically and vote on it based on charter?
I would say yes. I remember in the past that we, we took a vote on a raise because we don't have a, um, a compensation commission who would do the study and then recommend it to council for approval. So I think there's always the approval process. So in this case, there'd need to be a motion.
Yes, that's, that's correct. There is a budget, uh, allocation for council. And if there was a change in it, there'd have to be a motion and a budget amendment.
Okay. Is there someone willing to make that motion? I think we talked about, uh, uh, okay, Mr. Wilcox, and let's hear your discussion, motion, whatever. And then have discussion.
Yeah, I, I moved to amend the budget to include a, a 2.5% increase for council, uh, as outlined in the, the attachment, uh, which totals just over a thousand dollars for the entire, uh, council.
Any discussion on that?
So we have a second. It's got to be supported, right?
Yeah, it does.
Did, did you say $1,000?
It's total for everybody. It, it's in the, it's on page.
Oh, I was going to say, I think I've been grossly overpaid.
No. No, it's like $134 a piece per year or something like that, so.
I support.
Support. Okay, um, Mayor Proton, I saw your face. Do you have some comments, some words for us?
Oh, no, I just laughed at it being a thousand dollars across the board. I mean, that's not a lot. I just laughed at the fact that that's what we make.
Yep.
Any other discussion or comments?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I think we might want to just revisit the amount. My concern is that council will become, if it's not already, just, um, more or less a privilege for people who can afford. More or less a privilege for people who can afford to not be working right now. Or people who are retired or semi-retired. I think from an equity standpoint, we may wanna, and I don't know how we could do that, I mean. Maybe there's a way to allocate a different amount for people in different circumstances or something like that. But I'm I'm afraid that what's being offered might. Might be, might be an unintended consequence, might be that we exclude people from taking part in city government in this way.
Okay, Councilmember Simmons, I know that you and I talked about, and you had some. Thoughts and some feelings about this, so you wanna share them?
Yeah, sorry, someone knocked at the door, so it suddenly became chaos with the dogs, so.
No problem.
Yeah, so so Councilmember Wilcoxon, you were proposing a thousand dollars across the board as a as a raise. To be added, I guess. Can you help me understand, Steve, what you propose, sorry, because it was a little bit of chaos in the house, so I couldn't.
Sure, sure. No, so in the in the packet on page two seventy eight of three oh six. There's just a a two point five percent salary increase for council and the total for for all of this. Is just roughly over a thousand, and that was meant just to open this conversation. You know, we've.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I I mean, right, yeah, I think that that. This position, these positions are are kind of grossly underpaid compared to. You know, neighboring communities or communities similar to ours. And, you know, and and if if the we value these positions, the city, like, you know, I think that's right, it. Didn't come in, I guess, on us in these positions to. To do that as we value our other positions in the city. I do, I understand what Mister Jones Chance is saying, but. I I I don't think providing more money or increasing our our. What this pays is going to do that at this point, because I think all of us, except for, you know, with the exception, I think of the mayor, we all work. Full time and so, right, this is not an avenue for. You know, kind of quitting your J job, so to speak, but but I think paying more may. They give other people, might make it more feasible for them to participate in this type of role. By, you know, maybe they could then would give up a different obligation if this paid more and they could be active in in city government, I guess, but. I mean, at this stage, I don't think that two point five percent is is unreasonable to to entertain at this point, and I think, you know, as we. When we entertain or look at salary for staff and 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 compensation, I think that it's. Makes sense to include these roles as well and when we do that on a regular basis. So I don't know, those are my thoughts at the moment. Sorry, the dogs are still barking, so.
It's okay, Mister Morgan.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Up, my only two cents is that. Some people were talking about a full-time job or a part-time job. And regardless of the employment that I have in the different streams of income, this is a full-time brain. Like, it it's it's literally full-time based on how I I deal with constituents via email, person, via phone call. I can't tell you how many hours are put in weekly, and so it doesn't even amount to seven dollars an hour if I was to add it up, so. It it it's peanuts, so it's not, someone should get into municipal government to get paid. However, to fairly compensate people who do the work such as we do, I I don't think there's a, and again. Versus the last time, maybe an increase has happened. And I'm not sure, can somebody give me any information about the last increase? Is it in the last five years? Seven years, that's what I'm saying, so you wouldn't know, Andrew, could you give me some information?
It would have been either, I can find the resolution, but I believe it was twenty sixteen the last time.
Okay, so five years, okay, so I I again, I know I'm not here to to pay my rent. And and I'm not asking for more, but I do think, I don't want to be undersold about how much are of how available and accessible we have to be. In many different forms of media to do our jobs, and it is a job, make no mistake, regardless if we were volunteering. So I think those things should be added into that conversation.
Mayor.
Councilmember Pro Tem Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I have two things, actually. One was that I wanted to clarify, though, that the the increase in twenty sixteen was to bring the council pay back. To the level on that it was previously that they would take it a pay cut. All of that, so it wasn't an increase, it was to bring it back to the previous level, and can you imagine that's left or at right? So, very interesting. And then my other question was for Mister Bar. I think that for me, I've been on council this is my time, but I never understood fully how the rate or scale. That for council, so necessarily, I mean, I know this would probably be a very long conversation, but just wanting to understand better. How how it was determined. I didn't, I didn't do this for pay. I didn't even know I got paid when I actually decided to run, but and now doing the work. And recognizing like surrounding areas that the pay is different and their budgets are very different. I just wonder how the city itself. Came to the the decision to where the pay scale would be. I know it's a loaded question, I'm sorry.
Did you want me to answer, Mayor? Well. In in years past, there was a compensation commission for city council that made a recommendation. On compensation for council. The last time the charter was amended, the charter was amended to do away with the compensation commission. And provide that council sets its own salary. So you're in that process now, but I have a couple of questions. The first one is for Reagan. And does the budget at the present time include this two point five percent that's in discussion?
We did not put this, Mister Bar, this is not included.
Okay, so there's two part, there's two for council to waive, for council to raise the council's salary or adjust it. There should be two motions. One, to set the new salary. And then the second motion would be to amend the budget in that amount for that purpose. So at the present time, there's a motion on the floor to amend the budget to include a two point five percent. Raise for for council. And it's mentioned that it would cost the city about a thousand dollars. If that passes, then I would recommend that there be a second motion to raise council salary in that amount.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Mayor Pro Tem? Any other? Mister Jones Chance, is your hand up?
Yep, I wanted to get in here before Mister Wilcoxon withdraws his motion. It's actually for Mrs. Simmons. In your opinion, you know, because you have experience in this area, in your opinion, is. To, I guess, to accomplish some of the the things that we've brought up here, is two point five percent. Actually enough, or is it more or less just? You know, wasting a thousand dollars and we might as well leave it where it is or go much larger.
Well, it's something, how about that? So I think, you know, it would require, I think, just a little bit more research and to me also a plan, maybe over a period of years, because. You know, right, our city budget is is tight, and so I think this should be part of future planning, so I think. Right, it seems reasonable that we probably can make some movement now. And then maybe, you know, we're we have a plan that we would like, you know, our city, you know, the these council positions to pay X dollars. By, you know, this time and kind of incorporate it in as reasonable based on our budget, if that makes sense, so. I think it would require a little bit, it may be more discussions amongst ourselves, is how how do we value these positions to say, what is our goal? I found an interesting article that the city of Hamtramck, how the way they do it is they actually pay their. Their council pay is tied into what the governor makes. And so, which is interesting, right, so they pay, sorry, let me find this, their council members. Their charter allows council members to be paid two percent of what the governor's salary is. So per in January, that was thirty two hundred dollars annually, but they're looking, actually, they made a. They were looking to raise that to ten percent, which was about sixteen thousand dollars. And then someone else wanted four percent, which is sixty four hundred. So anyway, so that's that's an interesting way of thinking about it, and so maybe it's gonna require some. Different ways of thinking about it, but. It seems like it should keep pace, I think, with our other employees and maybe not exactly, but. You know, when reviews are happening for our non-bargain forced staff or bargain for staff, that that all positions here. At the city should be maybe evaluated, and it doesn't necessarily mean that they all get the same percentage raise, right? There's all kinds of different factors that go in. But I don't know, could our budget, you know, if we said we want to do ten percent now. You know, I don't know, can we sustain that? Maybe it's something more like, you know, we do three percent over, you know, the next three years and then. Look at it again or something like that, so that's kind of where my thoughts are at. I hope that kind of answers your question, but. I think it requires some long-term thinking, but I think that there does make sense to make some movement now. And then we come up with a longer term plan in subsequent budgets so that we don't, you know, kind of break the budget, so to speak, and we do it mindfully each as we go along.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Mister Bustavica, could the budget, you know, hypothetically handle ten percent? I mean, ten percent of however much scissors, maybe what, five thousand dollars or something?
So currently, that's hard to. Our our fund balance, I would just say we're at eight point three and probably. At least we should have four million in there, so that's, I I don't know how.
We could probably handle the four thousand dollars.
So what would ten percent be?
But then we we just have to remember, this, whenever we make a raise, this is not one-time payment. This is now a payment that will be paid every year. So we are, our fund balance is, if we don't add to our fund balance, then we'll be drawing to that amount. So that's just one thing we have to consider when making the salary adjustments.
So we're talking two and a half percent, it's a thousand bucks, right? So I mean, yeah, four times that.
So what, whoops, sorry, I'm so sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Go ahead.
Help help me understand, I, because I know we've had, what were, what was the average percentage raise for staff across the city? Does does anyone have that? I don't happen to have that handy, but Ms. Jones?
Oh, what, two and a half percent for non-union apps me and also the other unions.
Was two and a half percent, you say?
Am I right, Reagan?
I think one of the reasons this was placed in there, the two point five percent, because we want this to be tied up. To the union and non-union positions and how much raise we were giving them.
Also, I calculated the ten percent, it would be about forty two hundred dollars.
Okay, yeah, and and I I appreciate, right, I I don't particularly want to have a raise that's higher than anybody else here at the city. I think the one thing that's in consideration for these roles is that they're they're underpaid. So where the other roles are, you know, competing in the market. I would say that these roles aren't, so that's that's different, that's a difference, but so it's just something for, you know, to go forward, but anyway.
Jones Chance.
Yes, my last one, I think, so. A ten percent would actually not even make up for council's decision back in twenty sixteen, this wouldn't actually even catch us up. I'm just, yeah, I'm just thinking about someone who maybe like works at a grocery store or whatever, like, are they, are they ever gonna? Are they ever gonna be a part of this?
If I, if I can add something here, back when I was first approached about running for council. And that was in the year two thousand, and one of the, I did have a job and one of the. It was a part-time job because I was also a caregiver at that time. But one of the things that I said to the people that were approaching me was, I can't afford to be on council. And my thinking was, okay, I'm, my salary is taking care of my needs and. Two pennies over. But council requires, the working on council requires. Activity in the community. It increases your gas, because you have to go from place to place when we're not on lockdown. For people in Ward One and precinct one particularly. What one represents, we have any number of events that we are invited to, that we're expected to attend. And back then, the dinners were maybe twenty five or thirty, now they're seventy five or or more. And we're expected, we have any number of anniversaries that we're expected to contribute to. So when you stop and think about the expenses that council. Count, being on council creates, certainly, we're not, we're not gonna get rich off the job. And it's not a job that somebody can just say, you know, sit down and do absolutely nothing and plan to live off of it. And since I was on council in twenty, since twenty, we council has had one raise. And that was a two percent raise, but right after we got the two percent raise, we were asked to take a five percent cut. In pay, and so, and and we did, so we never really actually saw the two the two percent raise. Because of the five percent and we are, we just got the five percent back without getting the two percent. Raise back, so I don't know, if we want to attract people. And people from all walks of life to run for council. I think that we need to at least pay council enough to cover some of the extra expenses. That they would not have if they were weren't on council. And we do want to be able to attract, I think, from. From our entire constituent and residents, all of our residents in the in the city. Mister Morgan.
I I agree with a lot of what I heard. I think the strongest and the weakest part of any system is a person. And so the fact that, again, it's been stated clearly that I don't think as a body. And as an institution that we, well, people who generally been in this seat has been fairly uncompensated. And historically, and so those are some things that we can write, we can we can at least attempt to. Even if it doesn't affect us immediately, that we can attempt to show some concern that leading in the future, that at least, again, people. Can find some some merit in doing the work and finding some return, so again, I think as, I think as a. It's a many as a city, whether in a lot of different areas of focus, are we grossly, I think, underpay our. Our our teachers, our nonprofit people, our our city officials, and so it's something as a city that I think. And I don't want to be the first one to say, oh, we're trying to reclaim what's ours, but if 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 we're doing the job that the city demands, I think people should, and if. Attempting to be competitive, just just a wee bit of competition, you know, I I would hate somebody to leave council. Because they can't afford to be on it, like, that is, that's that's not what we want to think of representing, push out, so. I I I'm gonna support with the with the body. With the bodies as a whole reflects.
Thank you. Ms. Simmons, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, so I think, again, as a matter of principle, I I don't think that council raises should be. Ahead of any other staff, you know, bargain for a non-bargain for a staff person at the city. I think that the question is, i- is there any way to, you know, does it, does the council feel like, oh, we need to? Kind of right-size our salary and then get on a a system, you know, where we're looking at that on a regular basis. Whatever, you know, whatever we decide that is, or is it like, well, we're just gonna start now, again, with the two point five percent and then every year evaluate. Based on what, you know, we're doing for other staff in the city. If you think about it a different way, I mean, I know that Mister Morgan was saying, right, the the work we do, it's not just attending meetings, like. This week alone, I'll be in meetings probably five, at least, you know, six to seven hours a week. And then, you know, answering emails and doing other things, and some weeks that's just can be crazy. But if if you just took it as like a point two five F T E, so you know, you're doing ten hours a week, I mean. It's about the equivalent of paying pay ten, just over ten dollars an hour. I mean, it's about the equivalent of paying pay ten, just over ten dollars an hour, like ten dollars and thirty cents an hour, thirty-one cents an hour. To do the work we're doing, but, you know, in some, in some weeks, that's more. So again, I'm, I'm open, I mean, I just think it's good to be having this conversation. So if, if what we want to do is say two point five percent this year. And then going into next year, decide where, what, what makes sense, you know, from, from there.
Are we voting on the amendment of the two point five that Steve Wilcoxen brought up that we were talking about now? And can we make an amendment to that since we're down ten percent and just say five percent?
Yes, you can make, you can amend that. Ms. Jones, let's hear what Ms. Jones has to say before, yes.
Went and looked at some history, and so the five percent salary reduction happened in two thousand ten. And that wasn't returned until two thousand sixteen. There was additional two percent increase in two thousand eighteen, but you haven't got anything since then. So I think it's way overdue, is my two cents.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan.
I would like to make the friendly amendment to, from the two point five percent to five percent. And, and perhaps increase a percent over the next five years until it reaches ten percent. Is that too much, Jen? I don't know.
I don't know, I, I.
Wait, are you, hold on, Councilmember Simmons. Now, is that, are you making a motion to amend the motion that's on the floor?
I am.
Okay, before we can discuss it, we have to have a second.
Okay. Number was, Morgan was the second on that, Councilmember Wilcoxen made the motion, so if he agrees that.
Oh, okay. Are you willing to have that be an amendment? I think that's what I'm hearing cloak say. Mr. Bar, you had something for us?
Yes, the five percent amendment is very clear, however, council cannot. Tie up former, uh, pre, uh, council members that come in the future. It could be because you have to amend and adopt the budget each year. So the five percent is fine, I don't believe that you can order the fu- future councils to set their pay.
Thank you, Mr. Bar, so I'll just limit it to replacing the two point five percent with five percent if Councilmember Wilcoxen accepts that friendly amendment.
Sure.
Mr. Jones' chance, I believe you hit second to the motion.
Do you second? Morgan seconded that initial motion, so the friendly amendment passes.
Okay.
So, did I misunderstand, do we have to, so we're setting. The first amendment is to change the pay to five percent or whatever it is now. Then we'll need a second to amend the budget.
So this current amendment is to amend the budget, the budget to increase council salary by five percent. Once that's done, council can then make a motion to. Increase the salary since it's already in the budget.
Oh, we're just going the other way, okay.
So we're, we're amending the budget before we're voting on. Okay. So is that, was that there, was that the motion that Mr. Wilcoxen made?
I, I, I moved to amend the budget.
And two point oh four of the, the charter, the compensation may not exceed the amount specifically designated for the purpose of constant. Compensating the officers, the officer, officers in the annual appropriation. So really, the, the budget should be amended prior to the raise taking place.
Okay. All right, so was that his motion?
Yes, that was his motion.
Okay, all right, so any further discussion? Comments? Ms. Simmons.
It's curious, for Ms. Jones, what is our lowest paid? Now, I don't want to name, obviously, but I'm just curious, like, what's our lowest salary person making, like, either per hour or their annual FTE? Like, their annual salary? Do, do you know roughly, or?
It would be over the fifteen dollars an hour.
Okay, okay, all right.
It's us.
Our ordinance.
We are the lowest paid.
Thanks, okay. Okay.
All right, seeing no other hands, would you call the role, please, Mr. Hellinga?
All right, on the amendment to, on the motion to amend the budget to increase council salary by five percent, Councilmember Simmons?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Jones' chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
You're muted.
Councilmember Somerville?
No.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes votes and one no vote.
Thank you. And now we need, what is the second motion that we need?
Motion to increase council salary by five percent.
Do we have someone to make that motion?
I'll move to increase the council salary by five percent.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Seeing no hands, would you call the role, please, Mr. Hellinga?
Mr. Jones' chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown? Councilmember Somerville?
No.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes votes, one no vote.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Since our city manager and our, and our clerk had raised reviews, like, how do they receive raises?
With the budget amendment that we, we should address. It's right above that on the.
In the past, it was, it was done by a motion.
Motion.
From council, that's the only way that we, we can get one.
When was the last time the city manager, I, I know, and, and the clerk had a raise?
Well, I've, I've been in this position for two years, I didn't get one yet, but I've been here for two years, I just had my first evaluation.
When you were clerk for twelve years, when, how often did you get a raise?
I don't know, Mayor Richardson, you were here not often, they made motions. Usually they would make it when we did the evaluation.
Right.
That's when they would do it.
I definitely think it's something we.
Are you making the motion?
I, I make a motion to, 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 to bring up the topic of raises for the city manager and the clerk. At least I have a discussion about it, I mean, I, I definitely, is that a, an off-putting motion?
Well, I, I, I mean, we can have the discussion without the motion, right?
Go ahead, Brian, help me out.
Yeah, I would, I, I move to amend the budget to include a raise for. City manager and city clerk.
Support. I don't know what numbers a percentage is.
I, I think that comes later.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Mayor Pro Tem.
So, yeah, wouldn't that motion have to have a, a number in it to amend the budget, because we're just asking, that's arbitrary.
Oh, so we amend the budget and then add the amount? Or we amend the budget with the amount and then add the amount?
And then.
Mr. Bar, can you help us out here?
Oh, I got it. Yeah, if, if I could, council, really quick, this council only requires to vote itself a raise. You can include this all in one motion if you'd like, if you, you should probably handle in each employee separately. But you can make a motion to give the city manager X amount of raise. If, is that correct, Mr. Bar?
Uh, yes, that is correct, I'd like to mention that one of the reasons that there were few, very few raises in the past. Twelve years is because of the financial. Straight, straits of the city, and right now the city is in a lot better financial condition. I thought I saw someplace that there was going to be a thought of a compensation study for all city employees. I may be wrong on that, but in my opinion, if you want to give raises to the city manager and the city clerk. And those are your employees that you have control over, you should determine the amount of the increase. What percentage it would be, and then move to amend the budget to add amount. And then go ahead and provide for the raise of the salaries.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Wilcoxen?
Um, I, I have a question for City Manager McMullin. In your memo, you have a, a line for evaluating staff and implement employee raises for twenty-five thousand dollars. Twenty-five thousand sixty dollars and ninety-two cents, can you explain where that comes from?
I believe we wanted to get a study done till that the non-union. Raises could be done like annually, just like the collective bargaining agreements. And we wanted to study that so that we would not have to. Pretty much. Do this on a yearly basis, kind of like, but that they would know what their steps are gonna be each year. And so we didn't have the staff to do that. So are the plans still to have that, that study done? Yes, we've been working on it and we tried to do it in-house, but it didn't come out so well, so. Would we be in order to. Uh, postpone the raises for the clerk and the city manager until that study is done? So that we can, since that was already in the loop. That was for nine, that was for non-union. For non-union. Right now, with the city manager and city clerk, those are totally separate. Oh, okay. Okay, I got you, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
No, that, that's actually what I was gonna say, that the city manager and city clerk are separate from the.
Okay.
I withdraw my amendment.
All right. Does the seconder withdraw? Agree?
He would draw the amendment because of the study needs to be done, I mean.
Uh, well, it was made improperly, so I'm withdrawing.
Okay, well, improperly second withdraw.
I would like to make another amendment.
Thank you.
Oh.
Okay, Ms. Simmons?
Oh, I just, I wanted to make one, one quick comment, unless my math, and, and my math, I'm not always the best, that's why, you know, at math. But a five percent raise represents for us, regular council members, two hundred sixty-eight dollars for the whole year, is that correct? I'm looking at anyone. Okay, so, well, five percent might sound big, in the scheme of what five percent applied to our salaries, it's really pretty minor. So I'm just saying that to say that, and so I think that. Yeah, right, there's, maybe we should have some thought go into the clerk and the managers raises, I fully support considering that. But anyway, I just wanted to kind of say that, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Jones' chance or, or mayor.
I mean, in case I was gonna say five percent.
I think it should be reflected of our raises.
So, can I comment? I, I actually, I think I disagree, unless we did a compensation study. I think, I, I wouldn't necessarily feel good about giving it at this point, like today. Beyond what our average staff person received, we got five percent because, because. Of the situation we're in being lag, you know, lagging pay. And again, that represented two hundred and sixty-eight dollars annually for, for us regular council members, a bit, a little bit more for the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. Five percent on a much higher salary is a whole different number. Two point five percent on that number is still pretty darn good and probably is at, in pace with. You know, it's competitive, I guess is what I'm trying to say, so. I'm usually pretty pro paying people, I maybe I am, but, but I think that I, it's, makes sense to be mindful. I totally value our city manager and city clerk. So I think I would not be able to support anything beyond what our other staff have received this year. Without doing further exploration or study to be able to represent that. Again, it's not a statement about how much I value their work, or, you know, because I, I do, I wholly do. But, but I just want to be mindful of that, and like I said, pointing out, you know, our five percent is, is really, it's not an apples-to-apples kind of situation.
I, I, I agree with, with that. Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
I know, Brian, you want to make your motion, but I just want to say this before you do that. Actually, I agree with what Councilmember Simmons was saying about. The two point five percent being a good amount as far as in comparison to the five percent that we just received. But also what it makes me think about, and I think we've discussed this with previous iterations of council, but not this body, around our evaluation process. So in any other place that I've worked, my raise was tied to my evaluation and that scoring. And so I think that as we move forward and we craft and, you know, strengthen our evaluation. The raises should be connected to what those scores are. Because I do value our city manager and our city clerk, and they had excellent evaluations. And so I think that right now, because we want to give them something, we, we got, we got. But I do think in future, for future reference, maybe we could use the same work group that did the evaluations. Maybe to look into how we scale that to coincide with scoring, so that it, it, it feels. Like they are receiving what they rightfully deserve and not just in apples-to-apples because of what else was getting. I think that would be a really equitable and appropriate way to determine raises going forward. So we don't have to have this like kind of, you know, conversation to figure it out.
I, I agree with what I've heard so far, I'm only thinking though, that knowing that is tied to the raise. Might affect a person's scoring, you know, like for the next time, someone may say, well, I'm just gonna give threes, you know. I'm just gonna, you know, because you know that it is, you know. Tied to a possible raise, so I think that saying that in that way does lend that possibility.
And what I, and what I will say in response to that is that, 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 that could be true. But I think when we go through, when we tease out and really research what that, that, that scale would be. In the, in my work, for instance, is I'm a hiring manager and I evaluate and I make those decisions, the way the scaling is set. It's not such a huge discrepancy, there is a cap amount, and then it trickles down from that so that it doesn't, even if somebody tried it. If you are at that acceptable number and above, it, it's, it's close enough in range that it wouldn't impact someone greatly enough. That those, someone who may be trying to offset the numbers could have that kind of control. So you put mechanisms in place that don't allow for that as blatantly as maybe it could possibly, you could think that it could happen.
Because one thing I'd like to say is that as the city manager, being in charge of department heads. I have used, you know, the authority that I have to grant my department heads. Extra as their roles have expanded. You know, because there was reason to do it, and our HR rules say five percent, am I right, Kim? We can't hear you.
Yes.
So some of my department heads have actually, their salaries have increased five percent. As they take, you know, done, done other things or other special projects. And that's the way that I keep my staff motivated and to give more, you know, and to go over and beyond. As their roles expand or whatever, because that's in our HR rules. So when you say five percent, you know, some of our people are making seventy thousand, eighty, you know, our department heads. So I just wanted to say that we, we pay them what, what, according to their merit, what they do. And that's how I look at it and I follow the HR rules, so just kind of wanted to let you know that, and I've done that several times. I won't say who the employees are, but I have, and they don't make under seventy thousand. You know, because they've done a good job and they've actually taken on, because we still have less staff. And so I just do the right thing, and I just wanted to tell you guys that, because you guys. And so um, I just do the right thing. And I just wanted to tell you guys that, because you guys don't know that. But that is a part of my role, and that's in compliance with um, HR rules.
All right, Ms. Jones, your hand was up between the two comments. Or was it not up?
Mine was.
I think I just went like this. I didn't mean to comment.
Okay, all right, very good. Ms. Simmons.
Yeah, so I appreciate the comments, and, and I agree with Mayor Pro Tem. I mean, I think that what would, would, I, I, I'm hoping that each year we make the review process more mindful and more robust. So what we had this year, I mean, we've had, I think the last year and a half, two years have been kind of shaky, and we've gotten on stable ground, and we're able to kind of move forward and, and make progress. Um, and so y- you know, next year, I'm hoping that the review process, that we can make it even more robust and meaningful. And right, it would make sense at that time to evaluate, um, you know, uh, potential raises, right, for our city manager and city clerk, because that's under our purview, and it's up to us, just as a city manager, uh, with the HR manager, set the compensation philosophy for the rest of the city staff. It's our obligation to set the compensation study for, uh, you know, the, the employees that work directly under us, right, which is the city clerk and the city manager. So and, and so, you know, I, I think that's makes sense to do thoughtfully and, and right, it, it makes sense to do it along with um, the annual review, which is how it's done where I work as well, and, and it's, you know, can be performance-based, right? So we can decide that, and we don't have to decide that piece today. Um, I think we're at where we're at, right, with the process. And so um, as I've mentioned, um, I think Ms. Jones, you said that the average raise for non-bargain forced staff was two point five percent?
That's correct. There's a cost of living adjustment um, for non-people, non-union employees that match the contractual increases.
Okay, so today, I can't support anything beyond that without, with, I'm, I'm open to talking about it more for this, and again, it's not a statement on value or anything like that, but um, I think it's reasonable to give people cost of living increases when we are, are able to. And it sounds like budgetarily, unless Reagan tells me otherwise, we would be able to do that. Um, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Basabika, um, but we can at least, as a minimum, do that. I would feel comfortable with that. Beyond the average raise, cost of living raise that other employees received, I don't feel comfortable. Um, I wasn't necessarily comfortable, comfortable with our five percent, but realizing that again, was a whopping two hundred and sixty-eight dollars, like twenty-two dollars a month. Um, you know, that, that, and it's a different situation. But anyway, that's kind of my feeling today.
This is my last, this is.
City manager.
Thank you. This is my last um, statement. But um, will the uh, comments be retroactive? You know, next year, because we did a lot of things since I've been in, in two years. We, we converted the IT system, which had been out there for so long, it had not been accomplished. Uh, we settled the fire uh, contract, which had been out there for so long. These are some things that are achievements, and they won't have the same effect next year. I know um, Andrew has been very effective in transferring us to virtual, doing things that were extra or things that had not been done. And I just want to make sure that they, they don't get off your radar because of time. Um, it's been two years, and when you look at your goals that council have, I think council should be able to look at them and say, did we accomplish that? You know, we gave this to the city manager. Did we accomplish that? Uh, our previous city manager was here two years and didn't accomplish any of them. I mean, he didn't get a raise, but I'm just saying, those are your things for you to look at. And I don't know if they will have as much weight, um, you know, in a year or so. Do we go, and you know, because then when we go back, you might say, well, that was two years ago. Well, it was, but it was never considered. It was never brought to the forefront. It wasn't checked off as a goal that council had that was actually met. So if I could say that, you know, look at what your goals are. See what has been met. You know, did the city manager actually, you know, do this? And those can be your, your, the things that you weigh. And as far as, as I said, I'm speaking for the clerk, but he did an excellent job with the election, which was, you know, I mean, over and beyond previous years. There's a lot of things that you can look at. Now, next year, he won't have that caliber of an election. You know, so are you gonna go back and remember and say, well, you know, he deserves it because of what he did last year? I don't know if you're following me there, but that's what I'm trying to say is, when you're measuring, look at the work that they've done. Look at the goals that were set, the council goals, you know, were they met? Yes, no. Um, when you're deciding to do it or not, because that's how it had been in the, and I'm not trying to to say, I'm just trying to be helpful, because I know that we forget so easily the hard work that someone put in as time goes on. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wilcox and then Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I agree. Um, you know, what, what Jennifer had said about, about evaluating this, but I don't think that waiting till next year is, is the right option. Um, we just did an evaluation. I'm doing this right now. I'm, I'm reviewing, you know, performance evaluations for our, for the company I work for and changing how that works. And one of the things that they said was, was disassociating merit increases from your performance evaluation. And that just doesn't, doesn't compute for a lot of people. And so we've done this evaluation. We've given them great marks. Um, you know, it's not clear to me that this budget uh, includes that two point five percent in there. If somebody could answer that question for me, that would be great. But I think that this needs to be in a more timely way, because, you know, as the city manager said, we, we gave great remarks um, and uh, for both the city manager and the clerk, and, and I think that merits an increase this year. And so if we're not prepared to do that now, and, and we want to remand this to the, to the um, the committee that did the um the evaluations that set that up, then I would, I would move to do that and have that come back to this body in a month or two months. Um, so that's addressed in a, in a more timely way than leaving this to next year.
Okay. Ms. Simmons, Mayor Pro Tem's hand was up, so Mayor Pro Tem and then Ms. Simmons.
Yeah, so I think two things. So yes, I agree with what um, the city manager is saying about keeping in mind the accomplishments of our staff when we're considering raises. Um, I think that Mr. Jones' chance was actually, we're, was going to make a motion to amend the budget tonight to give a raise to both of our staff. I don't think, I, I don't think I received that we were gonna wait to do this. I think we're just having a conversation when I initially brought it up about how we incorporate this going forward, so it's not an arbitrary process. Um, and if he wasn't going to do that, then I have, I absolutely will move to um, provide them both with raises, you know, tonight. But I didn't want to steal his thunder, because I know he had been waiting to throw his amendment out, so.
Okay, all right, Ms. Simmons.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate all the comments. And like I said, if, if folks would rather wait and, and be, you know, do a thoughtful analysis of this, so we're not just, you know, uh, kind of, you know, throwing something at the wall, you know what I mean, and, and just guessing, um, then that's fine. Um, I do think, right, going forward, it should be more thoughtful. It should be more timely, just like our evaluations. And I'm hoping that we're, we're in a place where, where we're gonna do that, where we've got a, a, a process that feels uh, good. Um, you know, I work for a public institution, so uh, compensation is done differently depending on where you work, but in my area, it's, they decide across the board what the max raise is going to be. And it's usually between two, two and a half, maybe it's three percent in a given year. Last year, we didn't get any raises at all, because we were just trying to keep our job and save our jobs. And so um, I imagine this year, we may get a raise, but it'll be very modest. So but, but, so right now, where we're at with all of our staff, I'm just saying, again, I'm, I'm stuck on this two point five percent. Um, if we, and I understand that some uh, managers have had the liberty to go beyond that, but without an analysis, I guess, in some ways, you know, the five percent is a really arbitrary number, in my opinion. Um, that is a, we're talking about, I think, our most highly compensated individuals here, at this, you know, in our, in the city. And so that's a bigger impact. And so to me, I, I think it's worth being thoughtful then, if people aren't prepared to, you know, agree to, let's say, again, two point five. And I'm okay if you want to say two point five today, and then maybe an analysis, and then go from there for this given year, um, if that makes sense. I also want to point out that, just like any other institution, certainly if you don't feel like you're being compensated appropriately, you certainly can ask for a raise and, and bring up your accomplishments if you feel like those are being missed out somehow, or we've not, um, you know, right, but, but again, I, I completely value uh, the, the manager and, and the clerk. Um, I am trying to, like I said, be mindful of our other staff in general. And, and so at this moment, our conversation about the numbers are, are, feel very arbitrary. I, I understand that we just said, oh, my gosh, we're gonna give ourselves a five percent raise, and you're not willing to do that for these other roles. That was, again, a whopping two hundred and sixty-eight dollars annually. So, and we're trying to get, get ourselves on pace with other people. I don't think we're in the same situation when we're looking at other roles here, unless we do some analysis. But, but, so that, I guess that's my thought. So I'm I, I'm willing to entertain whatever today, but again, if we want to be thoughtful about it, then I wouldn't make that decision today, I guess.
Mr. Basabika. Your hand was up.
Yes. Yeah, I just wanted to uh, answer the question regarding if this was included in the budget. So uh, we did include a two point five percent increase for our non-union and for our, all the other um, all the other employees that has a union, we based them on their collective bargaining agreement. So for the two point five percent increase, we've also included that for the city clerk and the city manager. So those are all in the budget, but probably, I think those are subject to your approval then. Thank you.
Okay, so we don't have to amend the budget for uh, the raises if they're two point five percent, they're already in the budget. But we need a, uh, sounds like we need a motion to uh, make those um, to give those raises. So do I have a motion um, for that? Mr. Jones, or do we want to uh, before we make that motion, do we want to um, do as uh, Ms. Simmons had suggested that we, uh, or someone suggested, call the, the uh, evaluation committee back together to do um, some evaluation on the uh, raises that we uh, present? Or we can do the half and two and a half percent tonight, but still have them do the um, the uh, research that they were going, that Ms. Simmons has been talking about. So how do we want to do that? Mr. Jones.
Yes, um, uh, I think Mrs. Simmons makes some good points, and they're very reasonable. I think Mrs. McMullin made some fair points that are also reasonable. I mean, this body may not even be the same in a year. Um, so uh, my other concern is the cost of doing an analysis. It's not free. Um, and I think that the risk of overshooting at the two and a half percent number is low, especially when you factor in the cost of performing the analysis. Um, and if we undershot and we do an analysis, then okay, we can make up the difference. Um, you know, if there is one. So, and the other issue that I think kind of makes me feel like I'm in the pressure cooker a little bit is, um, I think it was my first meeting where council salary was brought up, and there was some reticence about changing anything budgetary outside of this particular time. Um, so I would move to amend the budget to include the two and a half percent raise. And um, maybe it's better left to a second motion to uh, do an evaluation after the fact. But uh, I think my, my motion right now would be to amend the budget to include a two and a half percent raise for the city manager and city clerk.
Okay, Mr. Jones' chance, that, the two and a half percent is already in the budget.
I'm sorry.
We don't have to amend the budget. We just have to vote to give them that.
Right, so yes, uh, would be to uh, so I moved to increase the pay rate for the city manager um, by two point five percent. And do these need to be separate? Is it best if they're separate? I think Mr. Helanga, I think Mr. Helanga said that before.
Do they have to be separate, or can it be one motion for the two?
You could uh, include both of them at the same time, if you wish.
Okay, then, um, then I move to uh, increase the salary by two and a half percent of both the city clerk and the city manager.
Support.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Uh, is there any discussion on that motion? Mr. Wilcox, and I saw your hand while he was making the motion, but are, does that settle what you had?
Yeah, I was just gonna second.
Oh, okay.
That, and make another motion after this.
All right, thank you.
Uh, I just want to make a comment. I, I know we care a lot about our clerk and about our city manager. And if it was reflective in their, um, in the merit of their work, we would have been did this. So the fact that we are bringing it up now, then we should offer them something this evening. And perhaps, like I say, once we do the study, it may warrant that we gave them too much, or we didn't give them enough. However, if we were really mindful about the work they do, it wouldn't be so long before we brought these things up. And so I'm, I'm glad we did bring them up, and I'm glad we did touch on certain things, and I think we should call it a question.
Okay, well, I was gonna call on you, Mr. Simmons, Ms. Simmons, but he called the question. Um, but that needs a second.
It needs a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. All right, so move, uh, Mr. Helanga. The question has been called.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Jones' chance.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously on the amendment. Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Jones' chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Uh, I would like to, to say, um, this um, Simmons and uh, Mayor Pro Tem and Mr. Morgan, I believe you were the uh, committee, the evaluation committee. If you three would please uh, come together and look at um, the analysis that Ms. Simmons was talking about, and look at the cost, the cost, or if you can do the work yourselves, uh, if you would. Um, please do that.
Happy to do that, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Hel, Hel.
Could we also put in council as well, so that we can see what other councils make across, because I know some people don't get anything. Some people only get a stipend when they come to the meeting, seventy-five dollars.
Really? Wow.
Yeah, true. So you know, if we could look across what other cities are paying their council members as well, I think that'd be good.
And I do know some cities pay based upon the number of, of residents in the ward. You know, um, some cities, yes. I, I talk to people that make uh, twenty thousand a year as a council person, so it's a wide, 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 wide range. Yeah, so, so please.
I have a question.
Yes.
There's, there's, you know, there's an, an amount in the, in um, city manager's memo for doing a study for non-bargain um, staff. Um, that would also include the city clerk and the city managers, right?
Although it, it could in the sense that they are non-union, but however, they would be separated from the other non-union employees.
Okay, so, so what we're asking the, the committee to do, and you know, I don't know if anybody was gonna bring this up, I was gonna bring it up, but, but that study, so um, is that a redundancy? Um, to have the committee doing one thing that is actually part of the, the um, the study that the city, city manager is um, suggesting anyway. Um, and I'd also like to have a, a timeline on that. If it's not redundant and the committee is doing a separate thing, then I'd like to have that come back within a, a specified period of time.
The way I understood it is that it would be a separate thing. Uh, city manager.
Yes, you're correct. And I need to go back and look at the line item just to make sure of the exact amounts and what they were for. But yes, those have typically been separate. Um, the, the, the non-union, what we were thinking of was a way to give them cost of living, and it occurred annually, so it was with the union. Um, that's kind of what that was all about. So we wouldn't have to figure, but then also, we were to. But then also we were to, to, part of the council's goals, one of the council's goals was merit raises. So that was a goal. So we're gonna look into that to see what that looks like. Um, and I don't think it should be tied to what you make. It should be tied to your performance. And we're, we're gonna look at how merit raises are distributed, um, what the criteria is. Um, in other places. And, um, hopefully we can get some good information that we can use. So that it's not subjective or based upon how much you make. It's based upon the work that you did. So, um, that's kind of, and that's one of the goals of council as far as in retaining, um, employees.
Right.
Remember which goal it was, but it is a goal.
Right. And so that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking about. It's those like, so I'm thinking of the committee's. Charge here as looking at, uh, merit increases for. For the city manager and the city clerk. And if that is something that the, that the study is gonna look at as well. Um, but it seems like that's a subset of population. Is it possible to just include those two positions in that overall study? Um, or we're just totally keeping those two things separate?
Yeah, and I think it would take some clarification on council's part, like, you know. I think that when we do the study, it's gonna show what criteria we should be using and maybe a scale, you know, a range. Um, but then again, it's gonna depend on, um, what council feels and, and we won't be able to use it. It depends on what our budget looks like at the time. You know, so we're always gonna have those other factors to consider as well, but. We will, we will do it because it's a part of the goal, so.
Right, and, and I agree. This was, this was a big discussion in terms of, you know, we, we're looking at, um, turnover in, in departments because, you know. Pay scales with surrounding areas are somewhat, somewhat lower. Um, you know, I know Chief Juicy made this point that, you know, a lot of the heat trains people and they walk out the door. And that's, that's hard to retain people when, when that kind of climate exists. And so. I, I totally see the need for, for that engagement and looking at, at, at our compensation level. I'm just trying to figure out how these two things are separate. So in terms of the, the committee, I would, I would like the, the, I had to come back though, it was within, you know, by June. If that's possible. No, not June, that's way too soon. Um. Um, I will yield to Jennifer.
All right, Ms. Simmons.
Well, the compensation philosophy, I think, you know, for our manager and clerk, I think that's our work to do. That's for us to figure out and do. So. I, I guess, I think myself and Anthony and Nicole, we can do some preliminary work, bring it back to council. And decide where we want to go from there, if that sounds reasonable. And I would think we should be able to have that back, you know, have a preliminary, just discussion about things, maybe, you know, mid. By the end of, of, of June, um, because I'm gonna, you know, I think we should request some data and things like that. But, right, I think it is separate and different than, than what, what the other study is because we're talking about, you know, merit and how we're gonna value. Um, I think we, you know, it wouldn't, it's not that the other information would be helpful, but I think I would separate those out. And then we can, again, in the next go around, you know, do this in a more timely manner with the evaluations. That's what might, would be my hope.
I like that. Okay, any other comments? If not, the Kalinka. We'll go back to the agenda. If there's no more discussion or comments or questions right now.
Uh, Mayor, we are still on resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one zero five to approve the budget.
Now. You read the numbers, but, um.
I don't know whether to like stay silent, so we go to, or, or to ask to call the question.
So, council has no further amendments to the budget. We can call the role on the budget. If you have any further amendments, now is the time to make those.
I guess, I'm looking at these, um. I'm sorry, let me raise my hand.
Mr. Wilcoxon?
Thank, um, yeah, I'm looking at the memo from, from the city manager and there's, there's salary in there. There's, there's discussion about three police officers. You know, and a full-time records clerk, um, and. You know, there was discussion at this at previous meetings, and then there's the study, and if, it seems like. You know. We can include those now, uh, with the recommendations of, of staff. Um, or address these one at a time later on because we make budget amendments all through the year, but, um. I guess I'd like to hear from the city manager about the, the memo.
Yes, thank you, um, Mr. Member. That was an attempt to give you kind of an à la carte. Sort of menu of the things that I took from the discussions that we had. Um, it seemed like the, the, the big discussion around the number of police officers. I thought that that was, that was worth putting in, um, because of the violence, because of the mental health, because of the community policing. Um, also because of the, I would say the perception that, um, people can't come in, um, twenty-four seven. And I kind of just want to counsel to look at those to decide, uh, you know, to prioritize. Are you willing to. Uh, grant the request of the chief for three additional officers? Did you want to amend it to one? Um, did you want to amend it to two and have additional records clerk? The additional records clerk is to allow someone to be, um, in the front. Uh, desk in the PM hours. Currently, we, we have a, the, the front, uh, I'm sorry, the records clerks. They usually do that during the morning, but if we wanted to stay open later, um, Chief, he has suggested that. That would be a lower scaled, uh, position that we could add, um, which is less than a police officer. To, um, make sure that we had the police station open, um, during late hours. Chief, would you like to add? And that's why I put that there, um, just to allow council to look at it and decide how they wanted to address that.
Thank you, uh, city manager. So when we started, started to discuss the topic, um, of keeping the lobby hours open. We were trying to think about how to do it in the most cost-effective way and how to use our people most productively and to place a police officer on a desk. Uh, given the staffing that we have, even if we increased it, um, we'd have to exponentially increase it to have a police officer there. And I don't know that that's for their highest and best use. On top of that, if we look at it in an efficiency of the records department. Um, if someone needs something from the records department, they basically need to show up before four thirty Monday through Thursday. Uh, at this point, um, which people who work day shift have a hard time doing those things. They have to take time off of work, et cetera. If we were actually to have an afternoon shift, uh, records bureau person, they'd be able to facilitate those people who can't do those things because of their normal regular, regular day job. Uh, and so it would be more convenient and efficient for those people who, uh, wouldn't have to take time off to get things from records that they need. And it would also double, uh, the effect of having the lobby open, uh, much later into the evening or late night hours. Uh, where now, uh, the lobby is locked and people have to use the call box.
Councilmember Wilcoxon, what was the other, um, item in the memo that you had a question about?
Well, I was asking questions about the, uh, the, the evaluation. Um, and I guess. There's a, there's a dollar amount there for, for all of that in, in terms of, you know, do we have a consultant that, that, you know. That came from, is that an estimate? That's a pretty, pretty exact number. So I was just wondering if there was already somebody that had, had given an estimate in that amount or where the, how that number came about.
No, actually, well, now that I, I think about it, that twenty-five hundred. Was that the pool of money? Um, because I think the, the, that, I'm sorry, the study is in HR budget. Am I right, Kim? The study is in your budget?
I wasn't aware that there was a study in my budget. I'm sorry.
Okay. Reagan, can you tell me why I put the twenty-five hundred?
It's twenty-five thousand.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think, uh, we, we've made an estimate just in case we're going to give out merit increases to our non-union employees. So it's a percentage of the salaries.
Okay.
Um, for, for, for those individuals.
Okay, so, um. Excuse my COVID brain. Um, can you tell me where in the budget that we put the, um? Is there a study in the, in the budget? Because that's a part of the council goals. I know one part to meet that was to give the thought, the money. That's one of the ways to meet it, right? The merit. Correct. Was to get set aside a pot of money to provide merit raises. That was one way to adjust, to address, excuse me, council's goal.
Yes, yes.
So the twenty-five thousand dollars is, is, uh, a sum of. Uh, percentages of all the non, it's not for the study, it's, it's the amount that the merit increases would, would increase our budget.
For department heads. I believe that that was department head level. It's coming back to me. Am I right, Reagan? Right?
Yes, I think that's the one that I.
Right, and so I'm, I'm looking at this and it, and it says department heads, including city manager and city clerk. And so. That's why I was confused about the separation of these two things. So this, this memo says that if we, we amend the budget by twenty-five thousand. Sixty dollars and ninety-two cents, then department heads and city clerk and city manager gets a merit increase. And if, and we're, we're moving that down the line a little bit, then, then I'm not so concerned about that, but if that's gonna be there. But I, I was confused on whether that was money for the study.
So was I? I forgot where I put the money for this.
Okay, so, so the study itself, yeah, okay, that, that's fine. Um, I'll move on. Um. I'm just, I was just confused by all of that. Um.
Yeah, I apologize for that because after I got to thinking about it. Um, and the discussion that we had with the committee, then I remembered what that was for. Uh, as Reagan said, I guess he took a percentage. Of the salaries of the city clerk, city manager and the eight department heads. And was there a certain percentage that you used?
Um, I believe that was, uh, three percent and then it include the FICA increase.
Okay. So that's, that's, that's what that was. Um, and I think that's probably moved at this point, we don't have. But, um, that was one of the, the ways I thought we could deal with, uh, merit increases.
Gotcha.
And, um, is there anything else on that in that memo that you have a question about?
Uh, no, that's all of it, at, at that point, yeah.
So I will get back to council to let you know, um, about the study. We've done most of it in-house last year, just in the ownership.
Oh, okay. I guess I have a question about, um. Uh, the, the rescue funding as well. I mean, is, is, does that, is it allowed to use that for? These kinds of, uh, personnel expenses?
Um, I'll let Reagan talk about that. I do know that we can use it for, um, time off that we paid for COVID-related. So we could get the, the, the data for those that took time off for COVID. And we are going to claim that as a loss. Personnel-wise.
Um, i- i- if I make, uh, Councilmember Wilcoxon, it was, uh, the American Rescue Plan Act, uh, it allows us to cover our lost revenues, which, which would kind of include those, uh. Those salaries that we, we paid out, um, for employees that, uh, missed days because of COVID, uh, which would have been above and beyond their normal time off. And then also we can use the funds to pay any hazard pay, but aside from that, you can't tie them to any other.
Sorry, campaign those. All right, thank you.
And we also can use it toward future. If we were to, we could set aside funds for future, maybe COVID personnel-related items. We could, we could do that. Say we're gonna set aside a hundred thousand to cover that. It does allow that.
Um, I'd like to offer an amendment.
Um. Amendment to the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we allocate seventy-five thousand dollars out of the one hundred and forty thousand dollars that we received in state revenue sharing. From the recreational cannabis sales to Washington County Barrier Busters.
I support that.
Thanks. It's been moved and second to, um. Transfer seventy-five thousand out of the hundred and forty thousand that we're receiving, um, from, um, the state. For cannabis, uh, return, um, to Washna County Barrier Busters. Is there a? Uh, any discussion on that? Your hand up, Mr. Morgan.
Yeah, I, I, I was wondering what the, um, the relationship between the city and Barrier Busters was.
I'm happy to answer that.
Go right ahead.
So this would be the same, um, the intention behind this would be to, to do the same thing that we did last year. Where we offered emergency rental and utility assistance and Washington County. Served as the fiduciary because they already have an existing program through Barrier Busters. Where they have an agency list of providers and, um, what I would anticipate us doing is, is passing later, passing a resolution similar to what we passed last year. Um, Councilmember Brown and I were able to get the county to. A, it's a separate fund only for City of Ypsilanti residents. B, the restrictions on it. Were different because we were able to set the parameters, so they were less restrictive in terms of who could get the assistance. That way it was for, you know, obviously new people, um, are. Work and, you know, experiencing and will continue to experience over the next six months, the year, um, emergency circumstances. And the aftermath of COVID, so with the way that, you know, the cost of living is higher in Washington County. On paper, someone might not seem like they need assistance, but they could be evicted next month. Um, so it would step in and prevent that from happening, but also offer, they also offer, um, utility assistance and direct cash, cash assistance. Um, under certain circumstances. Um, last year we had a presentation by Washington County Barrier Busters. Um, so if this gets approved, I'm sure. We can have them come again and talk about the successes of that. It was, um, I don't know if Nicole wants to chime in, but. Within the first three months, we actually used all of the funding that we allocated, which was more than seventy-five thousand. And I hope we'll be able to allocate more with the ARP funds. Um, but I think seventy-five thousand is the very least. Um, and I, you know. Just to kind of, the, this is revenue sharing from the sales of recreational cannabis, and I think that this is one way for us. To look at this as giving back to the community as a community benefit. Because we have a lot of people who are gonna be experiencing, um, situations. We, they're experiencing it right now, situations that they've never been in. Um, and sometimes five hundred dollars towards a DTE bill means the difference of like. You know, like these things become mental health issues, they become, you know, violence increases when people can't survive. Um, so I just think, you know, the more that we can try to use the revenue sharing for an industry that has harmed, you know. People who are in bad circumstances already, the best. So it's just a. Good thing that I think we can do. I wish that we could allocate more. I hope that we can allocate more with the ARP funds, but I think seventy-five thousand is a good starter.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Morgan?
In detail.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any other discussion or are we ready for the vote?
Yes. Oh, oh, for this, for this speaker, for this vote, yes, go ahead.
Uh, Councilmember Lena, city manager, McMuller.
Yes, um, I'd like to ask, uh, council if they would amend the budget, uh, to allow for the study because I cannot find it. I think this is the best, best time to do it and the best place to do it. Um, to amend it to, um, allocate twenty-five hundred for, uh, the study.
Okay, we've got the motion for the Barrier Busters, so, um. Okay.
Alright, uh, was there a second to uh, Councilmember Somerville's motion?
Yeah, that was me.
Okay, right, thank you. Um, council, are you ready to vote on that? Seeing no hands for discussion, uh, Mr. Hilinga, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Alright, thank you. Okay, now um, would someone like to offer the uh, motion for
I would.
The city manager for the twenty-five thousand dollars for the study, Mr. Wilcoxen?
Is it twenty-five thousand or is it twenty-five hundred?
Was it twenty-five hundred? I thought it was twenty, it's twenty-five hundred, city manager?
Yes.
Okay.
So I moved to amend the budget in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars to allow for uh, a study to evaluate uh, staff merit increases.
Support.
Alright, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion or are we seeing none? Would you call the roll please, Mr. Hilinga?
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Mr. Wilcoxen?
Sorry, kind of jumping around here. Um, I did have another question, sorry, this is for Chief De Juicy. In terms of the, the, the full-time records clerk, what's the estimate on, on how many people would be served by this? I mean, if we have people calling the call box and then somebody has to go there, is that, is it a frequent occurrence? Um, and in the past, has there been a, a night shift for uh, for the office? And, and how long ago has it been since that, that has been the case?
So uh, we're going back and I don't have the exact date, but I can tell you the events that occurred. Um, we used to have a twenty-four hour lobby when we had our own dispatch. Uh, we haven't had our own dispatch in many, many years, long before I got here. Uh, and so when we went to Central Dispatch with the sheriff's offices, when we started to lock the lobby down.
Okay.
So that was the last time that we actually had people um, that were able to access the lobby twenty-four hours. And I, I'm not sure what the second half of your question was as regards to.
Second half was, yeah, I mean, are there people coming up there now and, and using the, the box to, to contact people or what?
There, there are. Uh, and so it, it varies. This is very unpredictable business. Um, so uh, as I talked to the night shift uh, lieutenants, they said on average about six to eight people a night, uh, probably come to the call box here at the lobby.
And what are those inquiries about? Are those just for records or are those something that would be?
Those are mostly requests for police service of some type.
Uh, no see, okay.
Mr. Morgan?
Mayor Pro Tem had her hand up, I was waiting.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you, um, actually Councilmember Wilcoxen asked one of the questions that I had. Um, but I um, I'm trying to decide how I want to word what I would like to do, so Councilmember Morgan, go first.
I want to make a budget amendment, I think this is fun, okay? Uh, thank you so much, um, uh, Mr. Somerville, uh, I would like to make a budget appropriation of twenty-five thousand. From the hundred and forty-five thousand revenue sharing from the medical marijuana, uh, five thousand for the Ypsilanti, Ypsilanti Community Schools Arts Program, the twenty thousand for the sports program, um, which will be reflected in my council business. Um, so I would like to appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars for their, to re-help revamp their sports and arts program. Thank you, um. And again, uh, I, I, the reason being, um, used to be in a coaching at the, at the school and during COVID, I, 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 I don't want to, I'll bring it up to council, but I don't want to waste too much time, but it's um, it's dismal. And um, the, the, there used to be a community standard to have competitive uh, vibrant teams that uh, our city could get behind and support. Uh, when you have parents involved and you have community businesses involved. And a lot of that has seen the spiral down, but I know that in every facet of every program, and my daughter just played volleyball, and that most of the teams are understaffed, they're, uh, don't have specialists, they don't have the equipment, and they don't have the support um, from the neighboring uh, uh, they just don't have it. And so to be able to compete against Celine and Arbor and a lot of schools is, is, it's a, it's a, it, it end up, it ends up damaging some of these young people who use sports as a way to escape their circumstances and find pride in different things of that nature. So uh, that is one of the things that I think um, the twenty-five thousand could go to. Like I said, five thousand to the arts program and twenty thousand to the sports program.
Okay, um, before we um, move on with that, um, remember we did, and I don't know if this was the, if that was committed, we committed some money to um, Kathy Wyatt with the Sheriff's Department approached us and asked us to commit some of our um, uh, money from the sale of marijuana to a program that um, they were, um, I don't know if it was for housing, but we made that commitment. Do we have enough still left after that commitment to make these, both the seventy-five thousand and the twenty-five thousand?
What, what was the dollar?
Oh yeah, if I can, I'm sorry, if I could chime in, um, there are two separate funding streams. So the social equity fund comes from the permits that we get at the city, which is a much smaller fund. And then this is what we got, sorry, this was from the state revenue sharing, so they're like, they're two separate.
Okay, fine, thank you, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't spending that twice.
What was the dollar amount that we committed to Kathy Wyatt and Sheriff's Department?
Five thousand.
Oh, five thousand plus seventy thousand plus, we had, it's a hundred and forty-five thousand, this particular count we're talking about, correct?
Well, that was not.
Two separate, yeah.
Yeah, it was a different fund. Okay, Mr. Jones Chance?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Morgan, how much did you say for arts again?
I, I said, I said five thousand and uh, and I said twenty thousand for sports senses, uh, sixteen, well fifteen different programs. And this should be split equally across the programs or based on size and um, participation.
As a band kid, I, I gotta tell you, there's a lot more kids.
But band too, I mean, that's arts too, definitely.
I'm a band kid too.
Yeah, you know, you know, I'm a French horn player, so um,
You must play.
I'm leaving little breadcrumbs where you're doing history about me. So, yeah, I was going to propose a friendly amendment just to increase the amount for the arts, but.
Isn't, you can? You can even make it specific to band?
Yeah, no, I, I would like to uh, propose a, a friendly amendment to change the um, amount for the arts to ten thousand and then fifteen thousand for sports programs.
I can support that.
Was that the total, twenty-five thousand?
Yes.
Uh, there.
I support the friendly amendment, since I was in.
And I believe uh, Councilmember Somerville, you uh, you seconded.
Yeah, I support it.
Okay, you support it, okay. So uh, there's been a change in the motion, Mr. Hilinga? You would reread it for us, please, thank you.
With the friendly amendment, um, amend the budget to allocate twenty-five thousand dollars from the one hundred and forty thousand dollars of state revenue sharing from recreational marijuana to Ypsilanti Community Schools with ten thousand earmarked for the arts program and fifteen thousand to the sports program.
That sounds so beautiful when you read it.
Yes. Any other questions or comments or are we ready for the vote? Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
My only comment is that I too was a French horn player, Mr. Jones Chance? Yes, I support.
Nerds. I'm just kidding.
It's the ultimate nerd.
Were you saying you were too?
Oh no, I was on the pop team.
Oh, okay. Um, okay, I would like to say before we vote, uh, we will expect a duet between Mayor Pro Tem Brown and Mr. Jones Chance at our next staff and council gathering, whatever that might be. So prepare for it. Okay, uh, Mr. Hilinga, uh, would you call the roll please? Oh, I would like to say this too, it just makes me feel so good that we're giving money away. I've wanted, sat at the council table for many, many years and just wishing that, you know, particularly during the years when we were um, really having money, money woes. But this is all so good that we are in a place where we can give. Thank you. Call the roll please. If you call the roll.
You muted, Mr.
I was muted. Councilmember Morgan?
Yeah.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Council, before moving on, um, I'm, uh, Finance Director would like to share his screen and to illustrate the impact of these amendments on the budget currently.
Okay, and Mr. Barr, did you have something for us?
Well, I did, Your Honor. Um, actually, we're not giving money away. What we're doing is we're spending money for recreation in the area.
Well, thank you.
So Reagan, you should be able to share your screen now. The green button, share screen? At the bottom? Reagan, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I just wanted to share to council where we're at right now. So uh, um, our beginning fund balance was at eight point three one five. And then our management proposed adjustment was shortfall of four forty-nine. And these are now the adjustments that was approved today. And so we're now looking at our adjusted fund balance to be at seven point seven million. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thanks Reagan.
Alright, thank you.
Can you leave that for one more second? I'm sorry, I just need to take, I'm a visual and an audio, so I need to just look at it one more second, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are you done, Mayor Pro Tem?
Oh, yes, I'm done with that, yeah, I don't.
Uh, Reagan, did you stop sharing your screen now?
Alright, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Um, okay, so I think I'm ready. So first, uh, Chief De Juicy, for the um, full-time records clerk, do we know like what, and if I missed that the first time, I apologize, but what the hours we would be looking at having someone in the station would be potentially?
Oh, we're, we're anticipating that it would be a, a full afternoon shift, so we'd have coverage in the lobby to approximately midnight.
Um, alright, thank you. So I would like to move that we um, amend the budget to include the full-time records clerk for the Ypsilanti Police Department.
Court.
What was that support?
Uh, Jennifer.
Um, I think that adding this um, additional afternoon shift will be very beneficial to the community as we know that folks have been trying to um, get in there for assistance, not only for information, but for safety purposes and like service from our officers. Um, and so I think this would be a great idea for us to support and, and add.
Okay, is that the end of your questions?
Oh, I put a, a, a motion on the floor that was supported by Councilmember Simmons as well.
Okay, I'm sorry, I got a, a, a text from someone relating to our meeting here, so I'm sorry. Um, is there any discussion on the motion?
I just did a.
Yes, Mr. Wilcoxen?
Uh, based on what uh, Chief De Juicy said, I just did a quick calculation and it, we had eight people per night. That comes out to roughly twenty dollars per uh, per person that shows up at the door, so.
Just to clarify, this, this, the, right now we have one point five FTEs in the records department and they're, they're behind all the time. Uh, and also with the increase uh, of the request for video, uh, especially from our, our new prosecutor, uh, we have somebody working on, on FOIA and video almost uh, continuously. So when I talked about efficiency, it was the effect of being able to service people in the evening, trying to catch up on the records clerk, the uh, work that can't get done during the day and keep the lobby open, uh, so that people would have access to the police department for longer hours. So uh, it's not just having someone there to greet the public, there's plenty of work to keep someone busy.
I apologize if I give that impression, sorry.
I was going to say, that's for just in addition to the work that needs to be done to also have the building open, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Mr. Hilinga, would you call the roll please?
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Now on to my more controversial amendment. Um, I would like to amend the budget to um, add three additional officers to YPD.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to add three officers to YPD, uh. Any questions, discussion?
Oh, can I share my rationale first?
Yes, please do.
Thank you. So um, there are many reasons why I think this is important, but one of them um, and being some of the feedback that we have been receiving as of late around presence and communication and safety and just feeling safer by knowing there are officers in proximity. And we know from the data that our officers are spread very thin, we don't have many on each shift. We've had two that have moved from patrol to detective bureau. Um, lots of things happening that are positive for our community policing philosophy. Um, just a, a lot of things that are occurring. And I think that as we um, move forward with hiring the social worker and wanting to make sure that we have enough staffing to properly support that role as well. to make sure that we have enough staffing to properly support that role as well, we have to make sure that we have officers who, um, are not also spread as thin, because again, they are human just like us and have call after call after call after call. Um, in addition to that, as we've been working on this violence work group, another thing that came up, and I think I said this already, is that its presence is really important. And although we see, um, there are lots of issues globally in our country with policing as a whole in our community, what I have continuously heard, despite all that's happening, is that folks want to see, um, officers on patrol, they want to see them in our community. And I think that as we take, take officers off the road to do some of that work and work within these new teams and, um, uh, programs that Chief De Juicy is trying to put together, we do need to replace some of those bodies so that we have a more, more robust force, um, even though we're not at historical numbers, I think three officers is not hard to come by, um, and to support, you know, our philosophy of wanting to have presence, create safety, and also create, um, further, you know, relationship and collaboration in our community. I think we have a great police department where we don't see, um, the behaviors exhibited that I think we hear about elsewhere, and I pray that it doesn't happen here, but at this point in time, we don't hear, um, those things. And I think our officers and the, the culture that has been cultivated within NYPD, um, shows that we are unique, um, in this current climate. And so I think that we could support officers by giving them additional support with three new people.
Mr. Morgan.
Thank you for bringing this up, Mayor Pro Tim. Um, I feel slightly different. I do believe that the, the, the system of law enforcement that we have locally does need reinforcement. I do think we need extra bodies. I do think, um, it would increase the response time, especially for certain communities, but I do not agree, and I wish I did, I don't agree that having more police equals a more fair, equitable landscape in the community. I wish I did believe that. I don't, I don't equate more police with safety. Um, I, I equate more police with making the system run to make sure that, to ensure that it can do the job that it was meant to do. And I do think from being detective, detecting and serving, inspecting, all these things makes it possible when you have the bodies, but I don't, I don't, if we had a fully staffed police force, I don't think it would still equate with safety and security, except only in, based on people's perspective and perception. But I do think, again, to make the system function correctly, these things need to be, these people and these things need to be in place. Thank you.
And I don't want to debate, so I'm not pushing back on you, I agree, the bodies don't create safety. I don't, I don't mean that in any way, but I, I do believe the feedback that we have received, that people feel safer by visual proximity to our officers and to public safety personnel, um, and it will make the machine be able to work as it is supposed to and more effectively, I think, and more sound, um, if we have additional bodies to spread the work around. And that is the context I'm coming from. I hundred percent agree with safety is not.
I agree with everything you just said, absolutely, and I'm not.
Not created in that way. So I, I just wanted you to know, I agree with you, I, I didn't mean it in that way at all.
That's okay, thank you so much, I, I appreciate it. I appreciate the work the YPD is doing in the same respect.
Any other questions or comments? I just, uh, how much is this? Go ahead, City Manager. Excuse me. I'd like to ask counsel, um, if you are interested in using some of the public safety millage funds to help support some of these officers, because if we add, this is a year to year, um, expense, and we're, we're already at seven hundred and something thousand, this is gonna make it go to one million. So, um, do we wanna make the same allocations? Uh, with the, this is just a thought, with the public safety millage that we did before, or do we want to take maybe an officer from there and kind of, uh, regroup? Just something for you to think about. Okay, I was going to ask, how much are the three, uh, is the three officers going to cost us? Uh, close to a million dollars.
No, no.
So that, the, the, what you just quoted, what you just quoted was. I'm sorry, that's where we would be our shortfall for the budget, if we added three.
I was thinking about changing my line of work.
It's three hundred and, three hundred thousand, maybe?
A little under three hundred thousand, we did, uh, sorry.
That's okay, Mr. Basabika, you say it would cost us three hundred thousand?
Uh, a little under three hundred, it was two fifty-eight, uh, I think on the proposal.
It says. Again, that would be, that, that is the amount, the amount that three officers would cost us.
Two hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Yes, year to year.
Okay.
It's two thirty-eight, right, total?
Wait.
Two thirty-eight.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown, you're speaking with someone else and I'm not hearing what you're saying, what did you say?
I said in the, it, it said two thirty-eight five, what, for three officers.
Okay. All right, and, um, uh, council, I mean, uh, City Manager, I do like that, um, I do really, um, like it coming out of the millage money, uh, because that was, you know, what the millage was, was all about. And I get, people stopped me in the store to comment that we, uh, on how we use the millage money, that it should have been used for police. I do agree that this should come out of the millage money. Uh, Mr. Basabika.
Yes, Mayor, so, uh, if we do use the millage money, we're, we're allocate, um, we already allocated some of the money, just a reminder, to Parks Capital and two hundred twenty thousand to the general fund. So, once we now use it for the police officers, we're not go, we're, we won't be able to fund those anymore. And also, um, just a reminder, the public safety millage is, uh, good up to twenty twenty-six, may be renewed or not. But then, by twenty twenty-six, if we have, let's say, three police officers without, um, the necessary funding, this will again be shouldered by our general fund. So just a side note on those, uh, decisions that you'll have to make.
Right, and, and the salary comes from the general fund as well.
And if I could add one more thing, the safer grant does end after this year, so all the, the firefighters funded by that are also going to be coming out of the general fund.
Mr. Wilcoxen.
How many firefighters, uh, Chief Hobbs, uh, are on the safer grant?
There's four. And Reagan just made an allocation for funds, if we receive this allocation for funds, we'll have received just over five hundred thousand dollars of the roughly, I believe, six hundred and forty we allowed, decorate, uh, Reagan.
Can't hear you. Yes, yes.
So, so if we, if.
It's February of twenty twenty-three, or twenty twenty-two.
So, so in the next three years, we're looking at the potential of increasing our salary for firefighters and for police of about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the general fund.
Yes. Let's see, yep. Up, uh, safer grant right now, we're paying four hundred thousand, currently two hundred thousand is being shouldered by the grant. And then you do the three police officers and another two hundred thirty-eight.
So that's, it's about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that our, our salaries for firefighters and police officers will, will increase within the next two years, about half a million dollars.
Yes.
So the hundred and twenty that's in, that's going to the general fund has not been allocated.
So that could be used for the police officers.
Reagan.
It, it's already supporting the general fund, because remember now, we have, already have a shortfall.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, we've already transferred the two hundred twenty thousand, and we still have a shortfall of four hundred forty-nine initially. And now we're, with all these additional expenses that we're putting in, that puts up, that was, uh, put us in a, by seven hundred twenty thousand, and now we're deciding if, uh, we wanted the, the three police officers, then another three hundred thousand, so. That's why I think City Manager was saying we'll be down a million this year, if we, if we, uh, with the, with all this extra appropriations that we are making.
So in the, in the chart that we showed where the, the, um, the folks from Raymond were, were showing the, the fund going down over time, the balance going down, this is gonna increase that decline significantly.
Yes. I'm going to go. A steep decline. Uh, Chief Hobbs.
Exact number, uh, saved, due to safer grant over three-year period was six hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred twenty-eight dollars. That's what the safer grant saved the city, uh, personnel for those four over the three year period.
Uh, Mr. Jones Chance.
Yeah, um, I thought I was the chief one. Um, when we, uh, are, are thinking about police and fire, I, I, I'm just thinking about all the, I mean, even over the weekend, um, all the events that have gone on, I mean, a million dollars is not a lot when we think about potential for loss of life. I mean, I'm all about saving money, I think everyone knows that, but, you know, there's a, it's a trade-off.
Mr. Jones Chance, but if the city eventually goes bankrupt, we don't have a police department or a fire department.
Also true. Are we, I mean, are we at risk?
I mean, we're.
We have been close to it before, looking at it.
And then the, and then we had to slash the, the police department and the fire department.
Yes.
So the, the way to look at this is now we are drawing down on our fund balance. So if, if we are spending the way we're spending, then it's like, uh, our reserves, we're, we're digging down into our reserves and we have no way of replenishing it.
Awesome, so, right. I totally understand the need and the desire, and it might be that we might not be able to give, have three officers, but maybe we can add one officer this year and look at possibly another four, you know, next year. But, um, I do strongly feel that we need to be protective of our, our, our reserves. Um, I've been on council when our reserves were, were low and it, it wasn't fun. And that was when we did have to make the, um, five percent wage cuts and all. So there's some, not that I'm against adding police officers, but we need to keep our fire officers too, and if we're firefighters also, and if we're gonna have to replace them because of the, the safer grant ending. I think we need to look beyond just this year. Um, and do some, do some planning. I mean, you know, it's, it's kinda, to me, it's kinda like, you know, taking care and protecting our home. Uh, we look ahead, and there's some things that we might really want and, and maybe some things that we, we need, but not need to the point that we can forego some other things.
So can I make a friendly amendment? I think I do. I, I seconded. Um, how about we change, I propose we change the number this year till one, police officer, one FTE, versus, instead of the three, and reevaluate, I guess, next year?
Is there a second to that friendly amendment? Or does it need a second?
It would be.
No, the two, you two, the people that made, uh, made the motion and second, yes. Do you agree with that?
Um.
It's okay if you don't.
This is my thing. I just think that one is not gonna, it's not gonna do what the point of my adding the threes is going to do. Um, but I also feel like we do need to provide additional support. And so if that is what will go with counsel, then I will accept it.
May, may I ask a question? Oh, Mr. Jones Chance had his hand up before mine.
Okay, but no, we need to add, I need, uh, you seconded her motion, do you accept the friendly amendment?
I have a question, if I don't accept this and we continue discussing it as it was proposed, can a friendly amendment be made again, clerk, to, to change it to one? If.
I, if Councilmember Simmons removes her, her motion, then discussion can occur on this, or Councilmember Simmons could just make a regular, or Councilmember Simmons could, uh, remove her support for your amendment, which would essentially kill it unless it has support from another council member. So there's a couple ways to go about this.
Oh, yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna belabor the topic, but I also feel like there was feedback in addition that was coming for the original amendment. And so Councilmember Simmons, could we potentially just, uh, could I hear from other council members first before we make the friendly amendment? Because I, I'll support it after I kinda hear the rest of it.
Okay, I was, I was just trying to find the compromise, so, help him with me.
Yeah, I just wanna, I just wanna have full, a full understanding of where people are at before completely changing it, if that's okay with everyone.
Mr. Jones Chance, I believe your hand was up.
Yeah, I mean, huh, and it, again, I mean, I'm that guy, but, um, yeah, you know, to keep a house in order, you, you have to, you know, budget wisely look ahead. But when people are dying that maybe don't have to, you reprioritize. Um, and yes, I understand that we had to make budgetary changes before, but when we're looking at police, for example, I would ask, how's that working out for us? Um, and if we're gonna do one, it's, I, I can't see where there would be, um, a benefit that would equal the cost, so we might as well do none. You know, if it's not really gonna be effective, or we should do, we should take the amount that's minimally effective, and I imagine, uh, Mr. De Juicy would have something to say about that, and, you know, how much would really be effective, um, but the minimum, what the minimum, uh, number would be, but I, I mean, if it's a matter of we need to find additional funding, I mean, obviously there's only so much we can do with tax revenue, but, um, at some point, the, the safety's gotta, it's, it's gotta measure larger. And, you know, we've gone a while uh, without really a minimum of, of what we need, and that's, I think, evidenced by the shootings and, uh, and the death.
Mr. Morgan.
If I read it correctly, um, I know three officers were, were, were wrote, were written down with an amount, and then it was one clerk, right, a full-time clerk, so that's four bodies we're talking about, which is, I think, budgeted at sixty-one thousand. So that's four bodies, so my mind, if we split that in half and just get two officers, uh, it, it, it wouldn't exhaust this as in three, but it wouldn't be so minimally effective as in one. Um, and if, uh, like I think Chief said, having a full-time officer sitting in one place, is I think, I don't think that's the best use of the time, but so, in my opinion, I would vote on two officers, just so we could feel as if, um, we're meeting everybody halfway.
Okay. Mr. Barr.
Well, as a, kind of parliamentary procedure, when there's a motion on the floor, as there is for three officers, and then there's a motion to amend that motion, it's friendly if the maker of the motion approves, if not, the second, and you vote on the motion.
Okay.
If there's no second.
So we need a second for, we need a second for the, the friendly amendment. Is that what you think?
Well, I, I removed that to.
Oh, you removed that, you removed that motion, okay.
Just, yeah, because Mayor Pro Tim wanted to hear from others first, and now he said I was just. Just, yeah, because Mayor Pro Tem wanted to hear from others first. And I said, I was just, it was just a compromise motion, so I'm okay with that.
Okay. Is there, I heard someone mention, uh, Mr. Morgan, who seconded that motion, mentioned, you didn't second it? You seconded it?
It was my, um, council member Simmons motion, and then she removed her friendly, so that.
No, 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 the original motion.
Right, it was mine. It was mine.
It was yours, but he seconded, did Mr. Morgan second it?
No, I did.
Oh, oh, Simmons seconded. Okay, all right, thank you. So, okay, so all we, she, all we needed was an okay from, uh, come, from Mayor Pro Tem Brown. Okay, all right, thank you. Boy, we're getting deep into parliamentary stuff tonight. Okay, Mr. Wilcox.
Um, thank you, Mayor. I just, you know, I, I get the, the addition of the bodies. Uh, do the work that's there. Um, you know, Mr. Morgan's statement earlier that, that, you know, that safety isn't gonna come from that. Safety's gonna come from a lot of other things happening. Um, and you know, people getting shot in the, the, adding three bodies is not gonna be a deterrent for people getting shot. It means that the, the police department is gonna more, uh, efficiently deal with those things. So I'm, I'm not looking at this and saying that, yeah, this is gonna, this is gonna decrease the number of people getting shot. Um, and then the number of people getting killed. I don't see that at all. I see that, that's, that's human behavior that's happening and the number of police aren't gonna change that. Um, what we've got is we've got more people dealing with those situations after the fact. And we're, we're working at having, uh, um, a social worker to, to prevent those kinds of situations in certain circumstances. Um, and I think that is, that is going to be much more of a safety-related issue. Than having more people to, to investigate something after it's already happened. Um, I don't, I don't see the, and that's just me. I, I, I just don't see that. And I'm not sure. I'm not sure how I'm gonna vote on this. Uh, I'm, I'm, this is, this is an interesting thing, you know, with the, the addition of the, the four firefighters and that money. I don't know what's happening with that. Are we, are we likely to get a, a grant? Um, another safer grant, or is that the end of that cycle and that doesn't get renewed?
Uh, Chief Hopps.
We were fortunate to get a second, uh, safer grant, uh, under the, with the city's current financial situation. I'm gonna say absolutely not.
And there's, there's no way to generate the funds beyond this. Um, unless we cut something else out of these budgets, right? And, you know, we've got two point eight million dollars committed. And that is counted in the balance or not counted in the balance.
That is counted, council member.
So of that eight point three million that we started with, two point eight million of that is for a train station, right?
It's two million, and then we have nine hundred thousand for employee benefits, another five hundred thousand for the pandemic.
Right.
And another five hundred, I think, for um, green, uh, projects.
So that, that, that eight point three million that we just, we're talking about draw, drawing down a million is not actually, well, the committed funds take up a, a fair amount of that.
Yes. And also a good practice is at least you have ten percent unassigned of your yearly budget. Which is around one point six million. So we shouldn't go down, go below the one point six million in our fund balance. So that's a good practice for, uh, good financial standing.
Thank you.
I have a quick comment.
Yeah.
Maybe I, I don't know that I'm ready to make a decision on this tonight. Mainly because about a year ago, we were supposed to have a joint meeting with the Police Advisory Commission, Advisory Commission, and that hasn't happened yet. And I'm kinda just curious if there's a way for us to have this discussion with them included. You know, on an agenda item, that way we can advertise this to residents too and get more input. Um, on the direction, and then there's also the social worker factor. Um, I just, to be like, honest, don't think that I can support it tonight, but I don't wanna make a decision without totally weighing, you know, public input on this. And I just don't feel like I've been able to do that. And I think that's an important piece of it for me.
Thank you. And I can totally agree with, um, your comments. And if we vote tonight, I, I do, my vote will be a no. Um, if we vote tonight, so I agree with the, um, possibly the, and pulling together the joint meeting with, uh, Y-PAC and also, um, including the community in on it to get some more input. Mr. Jones Chance.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, push back a little on the quantity not making a difference there. Um, and to, to a certain degree, it's true. Um, but we've got citizens living, for example, in New Park Ridge. And we don't have enough officers to respond to probably the single best measure a property manager has to maintaining, um, peace in that sort of environment, which is towing, because the tow company refuses to tow unless there's a police officer present. And if you could enforce parking, uh, there would be far fewer incidents there. But we can't. Um, and the property manager's hands are tied. Uh, the housing, uh, commission's hands are tied. Because we don't have enough officers. If we had people on patrol more often around, apparently both Sitco gas stations. Um, we might see fewer incidents, but we, we, we can't spare the officers to do that. And I agree that we need, you know, social workers to handle some of these mental health issues, but that is not, you know, I've lived with a felon and prison changes people and it's usually not in a good way. And it's not always, a social worker can't help you in every situation. And I think people who are the most impacted by um, by some of the issues we see nationally with police are also some of the folks who are the most in need of this sort of presence. And, and we just want for it to be respectful. Um, so that's, I, I would like to hear from, um, Mr. De Juicy about what is really in, in his mind, the minimum that would actually make a difference? Because if it is three, then yeah, spending money on any fewer than that is gonna be a waste. Um, but if it is three, then we need to prioritize, you know, safety. And if I had the choice between spending on this and spending on a train station, I mean, I know what I'm gonna choose because this, these events have hit close to home, both figuratively and literally. Um, and I know the, I mean, I know some things are sort of in vogue right now. But the fact of the matter is the people who are really experiencing this day to day need respectful, responsible police presence.
Chief.
So, uh, to answer your question, it's, it's almost impossible to ask the police chief what the minimum number of officers he could use. There's always work to do. Um, but the impetus behind the request for three is that, is that, is what we were going to remove from the road patrol to start a community, uh, policing unit. So we didn't want to take away, uh, the road from the road patrol to be able to do that, cause road patrol is the backbone of any police department. That's where the majority of the work gets done. Um, and so by the expansion of the detective bureau, we've taken some of the responsibilities away from patrol to, to con- uh, continued and extensive investigations. The cop crew, which is our community or any policing unit, is gonna, gonna relieve some of that as well. So we're hoping that the officers that are remaining on the street will have more time to engage with the public, establish those relationships. It's, it's kind of a package deal. Now, if you're asking me if I would accept anything less than three, I'm willing to accept whatever help that this council will, will give us. Um, as Mayor Pro Tem, uh, pointed out, we are stretched thin, uh, and we have been for quite some time. Um, the history of the department is, is that in its heyday, uh, and I won't even go back to the heyday. I'll go back to the, to the early two thousands, there were forty eight officers here. We're at thirty one. Uh, and the workload hasn't changed and violence is on the, uh, across the country. Uh, there, it, it's not just here in Ibslandi. It's, it's, uh, almost an epidemic across the country in regards to, to gun violence. So, and I also agree that the addition of three officers is not gonna make the entire city safe. There's no question about that. And I wouldn't propose to even put that forward. But what I will say is, is that if we're able to establish more relationships in the community, that's gonna help us make the community safe. The community is gonna be responsible for making the community safe. It's kinda like the village concept, right? It takes everyone in a village to raise a child. It takes everybody in the village to make sure that the community remains safe. I, I could put a police officer on every street corner and it's not gonna stop gun violence. But we can't establish enough of those relationships where people will come to us maybe before something really bad happens. And we can head it off at the pass. Um, that, that's my feeling. And you're, and I absolutely agree. Three officers is not gonna make Ibslandi the safest city in the nation. But it sure is gonna push us forward in trying to make it better.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Uh, thank you, Chief, and thank you, Mayor. Um, aside from even rallying around the number of officers, I wanna make some, a clarifying point around the role of a social worker in a police department. Because I do think that there is some misconstrued thoughts about what this one person that we're talking about is gonna be able to do. Um, and in order for that person to be successful, they will have to be able to partner with available officers. There, there are so many situations where a social worker is not gonna single-handedly go into it and just deescalate. Um, these situations that we're seeing happening in the community. And the reason why I asked my questions earlier, um, when the gentleman from CMH was here, was to get feedback around what I know and I have heard, not only in this county, but also in Wayne County where I practice social work, around the experiences of social workers in these similar partner, partnered roles with, um, law enforcement. What's, what we're seeing is they, they're not going out alone. And if they do get sent out alone, they don't want to be alone. And so again, if we have three officers coming off of the road to be a part of the cop crew, and that's dwindling down our road patrol who can also support our social worker, we won't have a social worker for long. Um, because they won't be able to do their job effectively or even feel safe in doing so if they don't have that backup from our patrol, um, officers. And so I wanna give a different perspective on the leaning into the social worker as one of our saviors or our graces. It's a wonderful tool and it will be very helpful, but we also have to give that person the support and reinforcement to do their job. And they also need our police to do that safely. Um, and this is coming from, I rarely do like, you know, my, the line of work, but this is the work that I do and what I consult on daily with the authority in, in Wayne County and Detroit. Like that's the best practice is to be able to have officers to partner with the social workers. And that will not be ca, be able to happen if we already are as spread as thin as we are running from call to call and expect social workers to also come in a, and do that alone.
Chief, I have a question. Um, are not all of the officers going to be trained in, um, communicating with the, with the residents and acting, you know, are they not all gonna be, all of the officers going to be trained in community policing, uh, practices? So that, uh, it's not just going to be three officers and that they have to be pulled off of the road just to do that. But across-the-board training so that every officer is capable of, uh, practicing community policing?
So, I, I, I think that there, there's really two separate parts to your question. That just because we are recalling this a complete, uh, community policing unit, this is, this is still about law enforcement. This is still about solving our community issues. These are gonna be people that are gonna be able to be assigned to address something specifically. Uh, we'll just take, cause it's a hot topic, right? The Sitco gas station. They would be able to concentrate on working on some of those issues without being, um, interrupted, if you will, by their day-to-day run-to-run-to-run schedule of a road patrol officer. So we're hoping that, and, and the community policing is, is a department-wide philosophy. It's not, uh, these three people are gonna be community police officers. We're calling it a community policing unit, only in that it's going to be designed to be able to better address individual issues and problems that we know that aren't able to be addressed at this point with just our road patrol. So, yes, the entire department is gonna be practicing community policing. The, the key to that is, is having the time to be able to do that. If I know I have three runs waiting for me and I'm taking a report from someone, my time is limited. I gotta go. So I'm not gonna be able to have that kind of relationship or interaction with someone that we, we desire when we, we're talking about making those connections in the community. That's not gonna happen. If we know that dispatch is calling us saying, hey, we have this holding, we've got to go. We wanna make sure that we're being able to address all the issues as best we can with the resources that we have. And be able to have the time to cultivate those relationships. Cause that's really what community policing is about. It's about relationships. We can fancy it up and, and call it whatever, you know, buzzword we want this week. But it's all about relationships. And I, I've talked about, you know, one of the worst things that happened to police officers, they gave them cars. We had, you know, even in large cities and everybody had their own footbeat. Everybody knew who everybody was, you know, who the bad guys were, who the good guys were. And everybody went, if someone had a house fire, they went to the, the footbeat police officers so that they could find a place for them to stay and get them some clothing if they solve those problems. That's really the crux of what policing is, is to solve people's problems.
Right.
Not just enforce the law. And so we wanna create an environment where we have the time to be able to do that with as many people as we possibly can. Cause people don't call us to have a cup of coffee. They call us when they're having the worst day in, in their life. And so we wanna be able to take care of those issues in the right way.
And police officers were originally called, well, not originally, but they were at one time called peace officers. So, um, I totally understand that. Um, but you know what? I would, looking at the clock and I would really like to, seems like we're not going much of anywhere. Would like to bring this discussion to an end. And I think someone, I'd like to go back to, uh, Councilmember Somerville's suggestion that we, um, call a session. We can always amend the budget. We always do. Um, we, to have a, um, a session specifically on, uh, this issue with, uh, Y-PAC and, um, with members of the community. And, uh, Councilmember Simmons, I see your hand. Is it super urgent or?
I was considering calling the question.
Oh, okay.
But, cause right, I mean, I think we've kind of.
I'd support that.
You can call the question if you want.
Okay. I mean, I appreciate what Mayor Pro Tem had to say about, um, you know, in order for the social worker to be effective and, and kind of be able to do their best work, they also need to have the support. And so it's teaming up with the other officers. So, um, yeah, I think actually I will call the question and we'll, we'll go from there with it.
Okay. And I heard Mr. Jones Chance. Okay. All right. Would you call the role, Mr. Halinga, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
No.
Mayor Richardson?
Um. On to call the question.
Sorry, yes.
Um, wow, that's a hard one for me because I don't necessarily wanna, to call the question means we have to vote on it. And I'm not, that's not where I, I want us to go. No.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones' chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
No.
Motion carries with five yes and two no's.
Thank you.
Um.
There was three no's.
No, uh, Councilmember Somerville changed her uh, vote to yes. On the amendment, Councilmember Somerville?
No.
Mayor Richardson?
Please remind me, the amendment is to change it to one?
No, the the friendly amendment was removed.
Okay, it's for three. Okay. No, no.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones' chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries with four yes and three no.
Okay, let's move on, please. Are there any more amendments to the to the budget?
No, I just add a comment.
Yes.
I do, I would like us all to consider having a joint meeting with Y-PAC still, because I know it was supposed to happen last year, and it just hasn't because so many things have happened in between. Um, I do think it it would be important to talk about if them increasing.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Halinga, would you please um, set that meeting up between Y-PAC and council?
I would need uh, some dates from council to offer Y-PAC.
Okay. Um, they meet on the third Thursday. Um. Is it possible, maybe po- um, to meet with them uh, on the second or fourth Thursday of June, which be the would be the tenth or the twenty-fourth? Or the third?
I I I can reach out to to Y-PAC and see if they're available on those dates, but I would need a consensus from council that those.
Right. I was throwing that out for council to respond to those days.
I could, I could also bring it up during my proposed business if that makes more sense for everyone.
Well, we can do it now. Council, the dates that I mentioned, are they?
If we're doing evenings, I can't do Thursdays.
Okay, you can't do Thursdays. That's their meeting night. Okay. Um, what about um, okay, Wednesday, the twenty-sixth of June, I mean of May, or um, the second? Or the first, the first, the um, or or any Wednesday in June?
We could do the twenty-sixth of this month.
They they're next.
I mentioned that, yes. Pardon?
Their.
On the twenty-seventh this month?
Oh, they're.
Their next meeting is tomorrow.
No, it's not.
Twenty-seven. Okay, it's next week, the twenty-seventh, not the twentieth. Oh, okay. All right. Um, we can't do so.
But their next meeting is tomorrow.
Any, okay.
That's misinformation. That's a misinformation, Jones. It's the twenties.
Y-PAC's next meeting is on the twenty-seventh. They meet the fourth Thursday. I'm I misspoke and said the third Thursday, but they meet the fourth Thursday, which is the twenty-seventh of this month. So if we're gonna meet on Wednesday, um, so that would give us the the second, the ninth, the tenth, sixteenth, any Wednesday in June.
Oh, I am unavailable every Wednesday evening. I am in school, so I'm sorry.
Um, can I just, can I actually like take back my comment and then circle, I'll circle back at a later time about this?
Thank you so much.
Yeah, let's do a doodle.
No problem. It's no rush.
Do a doodle to Y-PAC and uh, council, and I can just put out some dates.
Yeah, I mean, it's something that they've talked about. It's something we've talked about. So it's not a huge deal. I just wanted to like not forget about it since we were having a discussion about increasing a number.
If if the police is a council, I could bring that up at the next meeting on the twenty-seventh and and report back.
That would be awesome. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you. Okay. Mr. Morgan, you'll be at that meeting also, correct?
Reluctantly, yes. No, I'm joking. Of course I will be. I love it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, anything further on the budget? If not, um, Mr. Barr?
Have you voted on the original motion to uh, approve the budget on second?
That's what I'm getting ready to call now, is to call for that vote. Okay?
My hand is itching. We might got some money coming.
All right, Mr. Halinga, would you call the vote on the original resolution, please? Thank you.
Okay, on Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash one zero five as amended, Mayor Richardson?
A yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones' chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Okay. You know, we might consider having a separate meeting for when it's time for us to work and vote on the the uh, the budget with all the amendments and all. We spent a lot a lot of time on that tonight, and but it's worth it. It's council business, so, okay.
Council moving on to the next item, twenty-twenty-one dash one zero six. Resolved by the council of the City of Ypsilanti that the certain engagement letter between the City of Ypsilanti and Raymond LLC for the annual audit for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one be, and the same hereby is approved. The mayor and the city clerk are authorized to sign for and on behalf of the City of Ypsilanti.
So moved.
Or.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions, any discussion, any presentation? Comments from staff?
Good evening, Mayor. This is just our contract for our external audit for the year ended June thirty, twenty-twenty-one. So Raymond now has done three years for us, and we have the option to renew them for another two years. So this is the fourth-year contract. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions or discussions or any recommendations from staff?
Yeah, I just want to ask a question. Uh, Mr. Basabika, uh, how are they um, how is their work being um, quantified or qualified or um, the merit to what they do? Are you guys satisfied with what they do in the last three years and you want to move forward? Are there any, have there any been any complications or obstacles?
Now, um, our audit was uh, um, quite challenging this year because of COVID, but we we had a good working relationship with them, so that's why we're recommending for another year for us to extend it.
So the first year was a three-year contract or was it been annually? It's been um.
Yes. It's a three-year contract, but the engagement letter, we have to go to council on a yearly basis. And then this year, oh, after the three-year contract, we have a two-year option to extend. So this is now the fourth year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Halinga, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones' chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on to the next item, Resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash one zero seven. Resolved by the council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas city board and commissions are an essential part of municipality's legislative function, and whereas a more robust reappointment process is needed in order to ensure city boards and commissions are functioning at an optimal level, and whereas there is currently no process or tool to properly evaluate a board or commissioner up for reappointment, and whereas an application for reappointment could provide council the needed information to make an informed decision when reappointing members, and whereas each board or commission except the Board of Ethics, Economic Development Corporation have been assigned a council liaison, and whereas the council liaison would have firsthand knowledge regarding the effectiveness of those up for reappointment, and whereas nominations for reappointment will now be placed under the Boards and Commission Liaison Report in order for that council liaison to provide the recommendation for approval. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approves the board and commission reappointment application.
So moved.
Well, support.
It's moved and supported. Discussion. Mr. Wilcoxen, I believe this uh, resolution came to be after your discussion last uh, meeting about, um, yes. So would you like to start the discussion off?
Sure. Um, you know, we've been uh, we've assigned liaisons to all the boards except the uh, economic development and the Board of Ethics. A number of these come by and they they get reappointed uh, as part of the consent agenda and and I, you know, there's not a, I I don't see a whole lot of uh, discussion about, you know, what what job people have been doing. We're talking about evaluations for staff and things like that. It's like, you know, we are um, subject to uh, approval on a, in an election year. Um, and these folks, yeah, I just wanted to have more information about where they are, what's going on. Um, and in input from, you know, the liaisons that we have from council as to how um, how these things are going. And so having having a reappointment uh, application with a summary, I think that's just a conversation that's is useful to have with that person. Um, you know, I think about the the commissions that I'm a liaison for and and having that conversation makes sense to me and and would like to hear from other people. Since I can't attend to all those other meetings, but I'm being asked to to, you know, judge a person's, you know, contributions and and reappointment. Um, I just thought it made sense to have a um, a tool in place to uh, to do that evaluation.
All right, so um, the mayor had to step away for a moment. Um, but Mr. Wilcoxen, is there anything in particular you're at? Are you asking council if they agree to this proposed application? Any changes or it's open for discussion, basically?
Yep. This was, this was, you know, after the discussion last time, um, Clerk Halinga came up with this on his own and sent it to me to see if it 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 looked like what I had had thought about it, and this is this is more than I had really put put mind to, but this is a great job, and I think uh, this is a good place to start.
Awesome. Thank you. So any discussion from council on the proposed application for reappointment? Councilmember Morgan?
I do like the application. Um, I do know as a liaison to a specific commission, um, if there was something needed from me as a like a write-up or um, some kind of a blurb about the job of the, I I just wouldn't want my personal perspective to shed any negative light on somebody I may not like um, on the commission. Oh, I know I want to be professional as I can be. However, if I if someone rubbed me the wrong way, or I didn't like how they conducted business, is gonna show in my response and in my reflection, and it just may be me. It could be, so I I don't want that to negatively impact the role, but I do believe that this uh, this rubric, this tool, this assessment uh, is necessary for people to find out what type of work they've been doing and how well they've uh, spent their time. Again, um, I don't have any problems with anybody, but if there was somebody who rubbed me the wrong way and and my um, assessment has some weight on whether they would be reappointed, I just have to be mindful of my own biases.
Absolutely.
I agree. I agree with that. Uh, further discussion? All right. Well, seeing none. Clark?
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones' chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Council moving on to the next item. Resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash one zero eight resolved by the council of the City of Ypsilanti. Whereas Peninsula Dam's physical locate, excuse me, whereas Peninsula Dam's physical condition has deteriorated since the City of Ypsilanti assumed ownership, posing a threat to life downstream in the case of a breach. Whereas City Council voted on May seventh, twenty-nineteen to move forward with necessary steps for the removal of Penn Dam, committing five hundred thousand dollars for the project to be coupled with and used to attract outside grants. Whereas the Huron River Watershed Council has secured funding three hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Fisheries Habitat Grant Program, or the initial phase of the assessment of the sediment volume and condition, as well as engineering assessment uh, for the two bridges that span the impoundment. Whereas the DNR grant included a public engagement plan, which includes a series of focused engagement and action-oriented oriented workshops and town hall meeting with a report of the findings. Whereas a working group consisting of council members Wilcox and Somerville, Simmons, Sustainability Commissioner Given formulated an initial list of members as outlined in the memo to be expanded with the input from the consultants and approval by council. Committee members were then contacted and confirmed their willingness to participate. And whereas the intent of the committee is to provide oversight for the public engagement plan and consultants Woods and Watts engaged by the city staff to execute the plan. Whereas this Penn Dam Public Engagement Committee will meet twelve times over the next year with the goal of each meeting lasting no longer than two hours. This term to be reviewed in October twenty-twenty-one and extended by decision of council. Now therefore be it resolved by the City of Ypsilanti that the Ypsilanti City Council approved the membership provided in the attached memo and direct the city manager to hire a Woods and Watts to moderate the process. Be it further resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council direct the city manager to determine location of the meetings and establish a meeting schedule, also to direct the city clerk to notice the meetings in accordance with the Open Meetings Act.
I said move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Discussion. Questions? Mr. Wilcoxen, did you have uh, any presentation for? So do you want to start it off?
Uh, sure, I'll start it off. Um, in the memo, um, this, a lot of the memo was part of the update I I gave in the uh, city newsletter in March. Um, and uh, it kind of spells it out. You know, we've we've got money to do these things uh, in the grant money from the DNR, um, and we need to, we need to move on the 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 public engagement, and and this has been lagging, and and that's partially on me, but this is, this is how we get that started, is to to create this commission in a, in a um, in official capacity. Um, you, it, we had met at one point, um, and some of the people that were on the that commission um, in the first meeting have have moved to other parts of this project. Um, and so have our parts of other committees that were described in the other uh, the other update, but um, the list here is is people that are, um, you know, we have two sustainability commissioners. We have a a property owner on the empowerment. Uh, we have a person that's involved in digital marketing. And then somebody from, a person from Schultz Outfitters, representing a business that that uh, is. And then somebody from, a person from Schultz Outfitters representing a business that, that is intimately tied with the river. I see this as we're going to need to, to expand on this commission. And Summer Woods, who was in the meeting previously, looks like she's dropped out at some points, was representing Woods and Watts and she was going to speak to, you know, their philosophy in terms of public engagements and, and, you know, what that process looks like. I can forward the, the proposal that probably should have been included in this, but we figured she was going to be here to address this. But, so it wasn't. So they're very inclusive. The firm is, is completely about inclusion and equity and basically bringing everybody to the table. And that's kind, that's why we went with that, that proposal and got out of the other proposals that were there. But this is to officially form that, that committee and move forward with getting more people on it and start scheduling those meetings. So.
Ms. Simmons?
Oh, I just wanted to say thanks to Steve for all the work he's done on this. And I think he's done a fantastic job. And I know, I think some staff members have helped as well and others, but I just wanted to acknowledge all the work that Steve's done and I really look forward to supporting this and, you know, as we move forward with things as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I appreciate the work you're doing too, Mr. Wilcoxen. The question I have is, what would be the difference between advisory or oversight over this engagement committee? And like, if they meet 12 times over a year. And this is for people, were we removing the dam? So this is to find out the most equitable, fair process, like for everybody to get around the table just as to, to support us removing it. And so if it was an advisory, what would be the difference if it was an oversight? What do you think the differences would be in this situation?
I hadn't thought about those, that, that distinction, to tell you the truth. I mean, this is, this is a group of people from the community to work with the, to work with the, with a consultant to kind of direct and give them support in terms of, of different, different parts of our community and what the messaging should be, people that know the community to work with the, the consultant to be the most effective in, in getting public input into this process. Because the public input, you know, we've done, you know, prior to voting on this, we had, we had town halls, we had a town hall, we had, you know, a survey and those kinds of things. And, and, and every time we do this, there's some backlash and some, some pushback in terms of the efficacy of those, those measures. And so this, this committee is, is, you know, it's an ad hoc committee, it's not a full commission. And it's basically to, to be the eyes eyes of the community with a consultant to, to make sure that everybody's being included.
So the studies that were done, like we had studies from people who felt we should have kept the dam there. We had studies from people who thought we should have refurbished it. And we had studies from people who felt we should have removed it. Now we made the choice to remove it. All these people in these committees are just going along or they're joining the people who are actually going to be in the process of doing it and getting them on board?
The, the, the point of these public engagement meetings is to get input from people on what, what they want to see. So you've got, you've got property owners that want their, their property rights to be respected. You know, and we, we made the, the budget adjustment to, to get those property lines defined and to see what that looked like. You've got, you know, and, and they're, they have opinions about what that, that, that land that is going to be revealed should be used for. And we've made commitments to them that the city doesn't intend to use that for anything. But then we have the park. And so we need input from people in the community as to what they want to see happen in that park. Because, you know, and then all of this will inform the, so we're still doing the preliminary studies in terms of, you know, looking at what's got to happen before you can take the dam out. And so there's still a lot of public and, public input that needs to be gathered to inform how that happens. And it also serves as an educational tool as well. As we go through the studies, a way to get that information out is through these meetings and through, through with this consultant. And so this particular committee is just kind of the eyes and ears and, and, and bringing the community perspective on how to engage, engage the community. And so, and rather than just hiring the consultant and having them go out and they don't have, you know, necessarily a feel for the, for the, the community, here are these people that, that represent different interests and represent the, the, you know, are representative of the interest that we want to have collected in, 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 in greater diversity.
Thank you for the explanation. I have no more questions.
City manager?
I'd just like to add that the public engagement piece is also a requirement for grant funding as well. So it's, it's kind of a requirement. Christopher, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, as part of the grant that we received for the design removal and restoration, we committed to a number of town halls and creating this committee and really engaging the public in that work. So it is required for the grant as you stated. Yeah, absolutely.
Councilmember Wilcoxen, thank you so much. You're doing a good, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I just want, you know, this is a, this is a long project and people's opinions will change. And if you look at the, the history of these kind of projects from around the state and around the country, you know, this is, this is a continual conversation that happens with the community about, about how this happens and how, how it works. It's not just we made a decision, we're going to do this and that's the end of it. You know, we need to keep, keep the public engaged in, in getting their input and, and informing them of what we're doing. And to that end, you know, part of this, I mean, you know, Summer Woods is just, just a fantastic person. I mean, you know, I met with her, with, with Christopher and Scott and, you know, her, her take on this is, is amazing. I wish that she could have been able to speak tonight. Along with this, there's a conversation with the Huron River Watershed Council and they're engaging a local filmmaker from Ypsilanti that the city has history with and, and the Watershed Council has history with of documenting this and providing that kind of, you know, it's, this is a, this is a momentous thing. It's a big thing, right? And, and to have it filmed to inform the public and, and give some background of how this thing is going to play out and also capture it so that after the fact, this serves as kind of a, a case study for other projects of this size. And this is why the DNR was so interested in this project is because this is kind of a unique thing. You know, they've done dam removals before, but this is, this is a very kind of unprecedented of this size in terms of, and this community. So.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, seeing then, Mr. Wilcoxen, I'd like to add my thanks also and for the, all the work that you've done on it. I know you've been working diligently on it for a good long time now and still have a lot of work before you. So thank you very much. I appreciate you and for taking this on. So thank you.
Yes, welcome.
No one else has anything? Would you call the role, Mr. Hulenga, please?
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown? Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
At this moment, I would like to make a motion to extend the meeting until 10:30.
I'd support.
Thank you for that.
We need to.
Oh, we need to have a vote. Is that a voice vote?
That is a voice vote.
Okay. All in favor of extending the meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
10:30, aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. Till 10:30. Thank you, Mr. Morgan, for that. All right. Okay, Mr. Hulenga, next on the agenda.
Council next item is a discussion regarding the downtown and Depot Town street closures.
Okay, I asked Mr. Hulenga to put this on the, the agenda. We got, I got calls in the last few days. One, I got a call about Depot Town not being able to have music until, oh gosh, I guess Memorial Day, I almost said Labor Day. And downtown has already started their live music. And there was, felt that there needed to be some equity there or equalizing so that they both start at the same time and end at the same time. So we had that. Then the other thing, oh gosh, we need to, there was a difference in the resolution, the one we start, passed in January and the one that we passed for downtown to start in April. And so we need to bring those two resolutions and amend them. So Mr. Ling, if you would like to read those, we can discuss from the, based on the resolutions.
Sure. Resolution Number 2021-014, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has hit the city of Ypsilanti and our businesses extremely hard. And whereas the public health guidance indicates that outdoor dining is safer than indoor dining and consumers prefer these outdoor spaces in 2021. And whereas the city seeks to assist in the recovery of our small businesses when weather allows customers to return to outdoor dining. And whereas it is expected that indoor restaurants' capacity will be reduced by 50% once allowed to reopen and vaccine distribution is not yet widely available or expected until mid to late 2021. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approves a special event permit closing East Cross Street stretching from Rice Street to River Street, North Washington Street from Pearl to Michigan Avenue, as well as South Washington Street between Michigan Avenue and the South Huron Parking Lot. The closure would remain in effect during overnight hours and last from May 15th, 2021 until October 16th, 2021 at a cost not to exceed $2,500. Live amplified music is only permitted on Fridays and Saturdays until 10:00 PM in areas of street closure. Additionally, live amplified music is only permitted between Memorial Day and Labor Day in designated street closure areas. And then the Resolution 2021-058A.
Okay, and Mr. Hulenga, you just read the part that we're going to actually be focusing on. You don't have to read the whole thing.
Okay.
Okay.
That would, that would be it from, from that one. And then I guess you want me to read the now therefore be it resolved and the second one?
The, the, in the second one, the part that deals with the timing of the, the live music, that's what we're.
Okay, the, the, well, if, if we're bringing them both to be the exact closure times, then I'll just read the, this part here. The closure is from April 1st, 2021 until November 1st, 2021. And the closure would remain in effect during overnight hours. Live amplified music is only permitted on Fridays and Saturdays until 10:00 PM. So that's what the rules are for downtown. And then the rules for Depot Town are May 15th to October 16th and music, and music from Memorial Day to Labor Day.
Okay. All right. Okay, and that's what we're, we want to work on, bringing those, making those changes to bring them together. Councilmember Simmons?
I guess I must have misunderstood when we were doing, you know, when we were discussing this before. Because I, I guess I thought that both of them were in alignment with when live music would start. I was thinking maybe it was Memorial Day to Labor Day for, for all. So that's, so I guess I was kind of confused about this. So I'm glad that we're talking about it at this, at this stage to get clarity.
Thank you. Anyone else? I, after being approached by it, we, and Clerk Hulenga and I looked at it and saw the differences. I would like to see us to change the resolution. Well, both of them, to bring them to a point where they, live music can be, start now, also on Cross Street. This is, this is the last weekend before Memorial Day weekend. And Memorial Day is the 31st of May. So if we, actually, we, I think in us talking about them, we just, we saw that actually neither one could start until the first weekend in June. If we're looking at the after Memorial Day, so if we want to include Memorial Day weekend. So I don't know what counts, what is council's pleasure on this. Mr. Jones Chance?
Yeah, I think for safety's sake, it's, it's best to do as much as possible to encourage the businesses to utilize their, the available outdoor space. You know, because folks are against the wall and a lot of them will opt to do things indoors. Otherwise, so, and now with the lift on the mask mandate for vaccinated people or anyone who claims to be, you know, it's, I think this, I think this makes sense. I, I, I'm not exactly sure. I think they were aligned the first time and then downtown came back, Washington Street came back for a second bite at the apple there and that's when the, the change happened. But I think they were aligned initially. So, you know, this, this makes sense to me.
And actually, we're just aligning the permit to use, to have live music, permission to use like, have live music. Mr. Morgan?
The, on the ordinance, on the resolution for, where it said the closures will remain in effect during overnight hours from May 15th to October 16th and a cost not to exceed $2,500. That's not in the second one. What does that cost and, and why isn't it across the board? It's not written into the second one.
Can you answer that one for us, Mr. Hulenga?
I cannot, but Christopher's here.
Oh, okay, Christopher.
Hello again. Last year, we did $2,500 for both street closures to help offset the lost parking revenue. We did a calculation of the number of parking spaces lost and the daily revenue and kind of calculated that. This year, the plan was to do the exact same thing. And so still honoring the $2,500 passed in the first resolution. As was mentioned earlier, the second resolution is sort of what got them out of whack in terms of when music was allowed to begin in downtown compared to Depot Town. But the $2,500, the reason it's submitted in the second one isn't because we took that away. That's still happening.
I would like to see it reflected in there in writing, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's the will of council, absolutely.
All right. Any other? Mr. Brian, Mr. Jones Chance?
Yeah, I was just going to say it is in there. In the resolution on page 306. It includes Rice River and North Washington Street. They're all wrapped into the $2,500.
Yeah, but of cour, of course, you know, there is discrepancy in another part of the ordinance that wasn't honored. So I think that's probably why Anthony's asking for it.
Just going to have a new South Huron Park, not a closure. Yeah, I thought we were talking about Depot Town and downtown. Just gonna have a new south here around Park Night Closure. Yeah, I thought we were talking about Depot Town and downtown. It just looked like that was for downtown and not Depot Town. I just wanted to make sure.
Any further discussion on it?
Yeah, I have a comment. Um, I only agreed to support the street closure when there were parameters around how long and how often the music would be played. I don't think anyone understands what it's like to live in a place where your home is turned into a live concert venue, but noise pollution's a real thing. Having your windows shake, uh, several nights out of the week is a real problem. Not being able to, um, utilize the place that you, you know, live and have pets. All of my neighbors and all of the buildings in Depot Town, many have pets. Um, it doesn't seem like we're ever actually taken seriously when we give noise complaints. I know that's part of the agreement, but I don't totally trust that. Um, so I would like to see us come in compliance with the original to stop live music after Labor Day. I think a whole summer of allowing two nights a week is more than enough. Um, at this point with restrictions being lifted, we are giving certain businesses a disadvantage to others in the city. Um, and this is a clear example. Things are being lifted. Now we're being asked to have live, um, large events at the park. And some of the same people who, you know, didn't think the capacity restrictions were necessary are now profiting off of expanding their outside seating where other restaurants can't. So, um, you know, these arguments were brought up before. I was able to look past them before. Things are a little bit different now. Michigan has really kicked up their vaccine distribution. Washington County is doing a phenomenal job. Um, so, I mean, the next agenda item is us talking about allowing a large events, which I don't really agree with, but, um, it, give, like, we at this point are totally giving certain businesses an advantage over others. I was never my intention to allow live concert menus well into November. I don't even think the streets should be closed past Labor Day. So if, if we wanna have that conversation now, I think we should. But at the very least, if there's already music booked, that's a huge error on staff's part. Um, and that needs to be addressed, and that wasn't supposed to happen. I'm totally fine if there are things booked now, that's totally cool, but I'm not supporting it going past Labor Day. And I will keep following up, and if things are not honored with the agreement on levels of noise, like, no, I would, I will invite all of you over to my home when these things happen, and tell me if you wanna pay rent living somewhere, and listen to your neighbors complain about their quality of life being impacted. This is not this noise. This is not loud cars speeding up and down the street. This is hours worth of constant music amplified for the benefit of businesses profiting. That is literally part of gentrification. So I, you know, I'm happy to consider things to help businesses recover from the pandemic, but totally disregarding residents is not something that I'm willing to do. And you know what? There are two renters on city council, and I think that that needs to be, like, we need to have voices, and there are about thirty renters in Depot Town specifically, but this is a neighborhood. Depot Town is not an urban downtown setting. This is a neighborhood. Neighborhoods surround Depot Town.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I did not support the second ordinance for it to be extended till November. Um, I thought that was a bit excessive. Um, if we can't go back on that, if we did, I, I probably would support it going into Labor Day only. But, um, I, I, I support the will of council.
Okay, I make a motion to allow live music only on Friday and Saturday nights between five and ten P M. From a more, from currently today to Labor Day only.
I support that.
Okay, uh, it's been moved and supported, um, discussion, uh, city manager McMullin.
Um, yes, I wanted to, um, ask Christopher if we had any music scheduled past Labor Day.
We do not, um.
That's good. Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, thank, great. That was my question too. So, so no one should be in hardship if we stop at, at Labor Day. Okay. All right, uh, Mr. Jones Chance, was your hand up?
Yeah, um, I guess as one of those disadvantaged businesses, um, you know, I would say, I mean, my main concern here is, excuse me, um, is just making sure people do the right thing. You know, the, the park events closure, I mean, that's totally optional. And if you can stop people from doing it, you probably should because of airborne transmission. If the, the other option here is either people go outside, or restaurant bar owners allow people inside to, to congregate even more. Um, so obviously, it's preferable that they be outside if those are the two options. So I, I'm all for extending it. It seems like common sense. Um, the noise thing, you know, you, you gotta take what you can get sometimes. So I, I don't see anything unreasonable about that either.
Any other comments?
I, oh, sorry.
Mr. Wilcoxen.
Um, I spent a lot of time last year, um, down on Washington Streets and, uh, sitting on Grace's front porch. And Grace and I would have the conversation that she just loves of music. And I said, yeah, but you're like a block and a half away from what's going on. I said, there are people that live a lot closer. And she's like, yeah, but if they turn it down, I can't hear it. And I was like, well, then maybe you should walk down there and listen to it, you know, and, and we had that conversation many times. Um, you know, there was a resident that, that lived on Washington and, and Michigan that was a thorn in everybody's side. But the point was, you know, this person worked from home. So I'm, I'm a musician. I have lots of friends who are musicians, and they haven't been able to, to make a living doing that. Um, so I'm supportive of having live music. I just, I just want the respect of the volume to be, um, acknowledged and enforced so that people can, can occupy their space. Um, otherwise, that, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Um, well, having not so much this year because the, the neighbors moved, but I have a neighbors for the last two or three years that, um, played excessively loud music, um, not just on the weekends, but weeknights also, and much later than ten o'clock. I can certainly, um, feel for those that are, uh, there. Uh, I think, I don't, I think all of council received a letter from, uh, Mary Kaiser, and I definitely could, uh, uh, deal with her, um, the, um, discomfort that there is in having the loud music going on and on and on. But I do believe that we need to, um, make things, um, equal between Washington Street and Depot Town. So, um, I will vote for us bringing the two ordinance, the two resolutions together so that everyone can have live music from now until Labor Day. And, um, while we're looking at and amending these resolutions, uh, with the opening and the lifting of restrictions, is it necessary to continue the, um, movement, uh, continue outside until November down on Washington Street? Mr. Jones Chance.
Wait, so we, this is, the Labor Day thing is just, I got night brain. So the Labor Day thing is just for the music component?
Yes, yes.
My only concern about cutting the date short is again, that's getting into the time where more people are gonna wanna be inside. And I, I mean, I don't know if it's appropriate for us to have some sort of a vaccine target for when we relax some of this stuffs at the, at the city level. But we're not, I don't think we're gonna, maybe I'm just pessimistic, but I don't think we're gonna hit seventy percent in Michigan. I really don't. There are too many people who are hesitant and whatever, and I would not be surprised if we saw a fifth surge. Um, and that would kinda be around the time that it would start to happen. Um, and the, the longer we can keep people safe, the better. And I, I know it's annoying for people. I mean, believe me, I, you know, I get it. Um, uh, and it's expensive to survive this pandemic. Like, I get that too. But you know, we're, we're not gonna hit that number, I don't think. And we need to focus on keeping people as safe as possible to the extent that we can, because if we know someone's gonna get sick, if we know someone's gonna possibly die, you know, then we should be a little more prudent. And it may be in the abstract, it doesn't make a lot of sense if you're just thinking about the number. But if you had to name that person or those people, you might think of it a little differently. So I think the longer, the better. Um, maybe we don't do Depot Town as well, or maybe we do. I'd rather see them both extended. But as long as the live music ends, maybe that's a, a sort of win-win for everyone, or a lose less, lose less. I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Helanga, you had something?
Yeah, that would also be a different motion. So that's what the table is, just to allow leave mu- music events from now until Labor Day.
Yeah, if I can add a comment about that, um, the streets were empty late last fall. There's no reason to keep them closed past October. It's a huge inconvenience for the neighborhoods in Ward Three, and I'm sure Anthony gets the same angry messages that I do about why we're closing down a major fairway through neighborhoods when there's no one sitting in the street, but that happened last fall. Plus, if I could also add, all of the businesses that are allowed to go out in the street have adequate outdoor space without the streets being closed.
Trust me, I'm with you. I, I, I.
I really.
I know the disparity personally.
It's just, it's, it gets really awkward when residents ask you why the streets closed when it's snowing on October twentieth.
Okay, Mr. Wilcoxen.
Um, there seems to be a general, uh, conversation rather than specific to the, to the motion, but, um, my neighbor happens to be a, uh, an inspector. And he came to me this weekend, and he said, so, you know, Washington Street does not, does not meet code for tents. What's going on with that? And I was like, I have no idea what you're talking about. I don't know what the code for tents are. But, you know, when we first had this conversation, you know, we talked about, about ventilation and, and, you know, all the things that need to be considered. And it, and it seems like the, the Bobcat Bonnie tent has gone back to, to what they had before. It's just, it's just an extension. You know, it's a little different now because of the relaxation of the, of the, uh, of the requirements from the state and the CDC. But, you know, the, the same thing happened last year, and we had to have a conversation with them. But I, I'm curious about, you know, his statement about that tent not meeting code for, for the city tent code. So I'd like somebody to look into that, if possible. I do.
Mr. Myers, hey.
Good evening, council. I haven't got to see, uh, you guys, or you haven't got to see me, at least I've followed you. Um, the tent does meet code for tent, uh, for tents in the city. Um, we've been working with Bobcat Bonnies now. Uh, we do have some concern about the closing of the, of the panels, uh, but I can assure you, uh, that, that's just a concern more for public health, because that's the reason that the roads were, the streets were shut down, uh, which we will be working with them on. But as far as the tent goes, trust me, uh, I, I think the city manager can attest to the vast amount of conversations we've had about tents. And, uh, the only people who really have to inspect tents are the fire department, and they have signed off on it. Um, and we do have a zoning verification permit that, that also does that. So, uh, like I said, I can assure you, uh, we've had many, 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 many conversations about tents. Um, and, uh, Bobcat Bonnie does comply.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I have one more comment before we vote on this. Just for clarification, I don't need to know if this needs to be made into motion. Um, there are protocols in place this year for residents to submit complaints. Um, should I add something? Should I make another motion or add to this motion that says residents will get notified on the process for how to, um, file complaints and what happens if there is a valid complaint where the decibels read over seventy, um?
That would need, that would need to be a separate, that would need to be a separate motion.
Okay.
All right, uh, if there's nothing more on here, I think, uh, Mr. Helanga, I think you can call the roll.
Can you, can you re-
Wilcoxen?
Can you reread what the motion is? Been a lot of discussion, I was. You're muted, Andrew.
To allow live music events from now until Labor Day.
Oh, that's it, okay.
No, between five and ten P M. on Friday and Saturday only.
Wednesday at two o'clock in the morning.
Yes.
No.
Okay, with, and then what I said, between five P M. until ten P M. Friday and Saturday only.
Uh, yes.
All right, so council member Wilcoxen, that was a yes from you?
That's a yes from.
Okay. Mayor Pro-Tep Brown?
Yes.
Council member Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Council member Morgan?
Yes.
Council member Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Cool, I make another motion to direct city staff to inform residents in Depot Town and, um, up in the immediate areas of Cross and River Street on how to issue, um, noise complaints and what the process is if, um, businesses violate that, also on Washington Street and Michigan, nearest the area where live music is played.
For.
It's been moved in second to, um, have staff notify residents of the way to file an official complaint. Uh, I, Mr. Jacobs is here with us. You have something for us?
Yeah, so, um, every show, right, has a noise permit. They run through this process. Um, they're briefed on what the decibel limit is, and they sign something saying that if they're repeat offenders and they're too loud, um, they won't be allowed to use the streets for music performances anymore. Um, and so we can definitely distribute information about that. Um, I think that's a suitable process to handle, um, people who are too loud. Um, but if there's something else, um, that folks wanna see, or the city manager wishes to do it another way, um, we can advise on another process as well. Offer what, what we do have right now to control that.
Yeah, I think just generally, like, information's good because people don't know. And unfortunately, people have called and reported noise complaints in the past, and nothing, you know, happened. So it happened often at Cultivate and will likely continue to happen, and people still don't fully understand the process there. So I would appreciate that a lot.
Yeah, um, council member, um, Somerville, um, you might wanna sometime in your downtime take a look at the noi- noise ordinance, because most of the time they're within the decimal limit. And maybe our decimal limit is too high. I don't know, but it's just something you can look at.
Yeah, I know, I know it's seventy, but I know for sure that last year music in Depot Town, to get seventy decibels, they had to go all the way to the back end of the freight house, um, which is significantly far away than my apartment. So, yeah, I don't know. I, I, I think seventy decibels could be loud, but I think that's what our ordinance says.
Okay. Any other, uh, discussion on the motion? Any other uh, discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing now, uh, Mr. Linger, would you call the roll, please?
Sure, I'm gonna read it just to make sure I got everything. Direct city staff to provide notice to residents in Depot Town and downtown, the process to file a noise complaint. Is, did I capture that, Councilmember Somerville?
Yeah.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff. Um, Joe or Christopher, do I need to make a motion on the location of where the music's played?
I mean, you can. We are going to work that out, but I think that i- if if, if that is your pleasure, I, I totally
No, if you guys can like handle that, that's cool. I won't make a motion. I just want to make sure that that's still considered because in between the two buildings with residents isn't the best spot.
I, I, I agree, and that is on our, we will make sure of that.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Helanga.
If there's nothing else from council on this item and you'd like to move to the next item, the next item is discussion regarding summer events.
I asked um, the clerk to put this back on the uh, agenda tonight for discussion simply because um, there were changes from uh, MDHHS um, Department of Human Health, Health Service, Human and Health Services uh, here in the state of Michigan and the, the release from the CDC. Uh, we had voted to not have uh, any events and I just wanted to bring it back because of the change um, from the state. Uh, Chief, do you have something for us? I see you joined us.
Only if there was going to be any yes, any questions on this, because Wendy's a special events coordinator and she works here in the police department, so I just wanted to
All right.
Be available.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask a question? Uh, Chief, how much money annually d- does the police department bring in by supporting the special events?
I, I would say that it's actually probably in the negative number. Uh, some events um, we're able to charge people for, but we never actually recoup all, all the costs from the police department. Uh, parades, stuff like that. Uh, generally, we, we don't charge that back. So I don't, I don't know that we actually bring in a- anything more than um, what we would charge somebody and probably were in the negative.
So it, uh, well, I'm sure you like to see parades and, and events, but it wouldn't be any smoke if there weren't any events for you guys to lose money on.
You know, th- the events that we have annually uh, bring some vibrancy to the community and people enjoy them. Uh, quite frankly, most of the officers enjoy working them. Uh, it's, you know, it's a chance for us to um, you know, have some of that non-law enforcement contact that we, we like to have with the community. Um, but having looked at these particular um, guidelines, you know, I guess part of the question is, is how, how do we uh, enforce some of these things? Uh, in the, the much larger scale events like if Heritage Fest were to be here in Ypsilanti this year, how would we keep them in six-person pods while they're eating six feet apart from each other or smaller groups? I just think that that might be a little cumbersome.
Okay. So even though the, 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 the sta- the, the, in, the rules have changed, whatever, but the situation surrounding what could happen at the events won't.
Right.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Wilcox?
When we made this decision, um, you know, we made the decision under the best information we had at the time. And vaccination was not uh, was not prevalent. There were, there were projections on what that would look like. I had absolutely no faith in, in those projections whatsoever. Um, you know, the previous administration had dropped the ball. Nothing was happening. Um, I was not sure that, that people would be able to make up for that lost time. And so we made a I think we made a good decision in good faith at the time that we made that decision. Circumstances have changed. Um, you know, the, the, the initial question is whether we were going to allow something to happen in May. Um, and at the time, I said, well, why don't they just delay till September, because then there's a whole lot more information going to be available. And it was like, no, they didn't want to do that. So, you know, we lost that. And, and I appreciate that, that people want to get out and do these things and, and with the relaxation of the last week. You know, it calls a whole different question, but you know, we're still in this, this uh, morass, for lack of a better word. There are people that are vaccinated, there are people that aren't vaccinated, there are people that can walk around without a mask and not have to uh, account to anybody about what their state of vaccination is. HIPAA doesn't allow us to ask people what their, what their vaccination state is. And so, you know, as, as Mr. Jones Chance commented earlier, is that, you know, we're going to see another wave out of this. And I'm, I'm fully prepared that that's going to be the case. Um, I had extensive conversations today with the company I work for in terms of bringing my staff from working at home, putting us into a small space in a, in a shared office. Um, to, to do that, we're all, we're all vaccinated, but that you know, we're now going to be exposed to people who, the same thing. You can't ask your coworker if they've been ac- vaccinated or not, and, and it's totally a voluntary thing. So the, that's the way our society is going to work. We're going to have some people who just don't pay attention to anything and enter a caution to the wind, and we're going to have people that are going to be overly cautious and not go to these things. Um, and you know, as a body, we, we have tended to be overly cautious about these things. Um, because we care for our constituents and, and people and you know, there's the potential of, of illness and, and eventually death from this. So that colors this whole conversation in terms of, yeah, well, we want to go out and have a good time in the park. It's like, well, you should go out and have a good time in the park. Just don't do it a thousand people at a time. Um, so, you know, we have to have faith in our constituents that they'll make good decisions and we have to, you know, look out for their best interests at the same time. Um, you know, I'm on the, the committee for the Friends of Rutherford Pool. And those discussions on how to open that, and I, and I look at that and I, and I try to make sense of this in terms of that. And so we have an institution within this, within the city that, that um, services all of the community. And for some, for some people, this is what children do for the summer is they go to the pool. And looking at the measures that have to be implemented there that are required by the, the county in terms of, they have to hire people to monitor, to make sure that people are compliant. You can't have a, you can't have a regular staff do this and you can't have a, a lifeguard at the pool making sure that people are keeping distance and doing all of those kinds of things. You have to have a separate person doing that. So when we look at these kinds of events in the, in the public parks, you know, wh- wh- what is happening with that, you know? And, and you know, in the last week, that, that whole picture has changed drastically because they're saying, well, you know, if you're vaccinated, you can just walk around. Um, I, I don't know what to make of this. You know, I am, I am abundantly cautious. I am vaccinated and I am going to wear masks in public places. And I am going to protect people because I know what the limitations of, of vaccines are. There are people in this community that that say that we're not making uh, our decisions based on science. And I think they use the word, as a scientist, I think they're using that word incorrectly. Um, they, they, they don't know what that means, because all they know that means is we're going to go by CDC guidelines. And CDC guidelines are as much uh, subject to, to, to political and financial pressure as anything. And, and we've seen how that's changed in the last several months and, and those things. And even, you know, the, the message or the, the, the links that I sent just shows that there's confusing information out there. So we're going to make this decision and it's going to be because of political and, and, and financial pressure. And we're going to have to keep in, in, in mind that people will get sick because of this, of this relaxation of these, these uh, codes. Um, I, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Jones Chance, but before you start, Mr. Chance, can we have a motion to extend the meeting to eleven o'clock, please?
I'll uh, I'll move to extend to ten forty-five.
Support. And can we have a motion to limit this conversation since it's just a discussion? We won't solve anything tonight.
Well, we need to, you know, uh, if we're going to make a change from what we have now, we need to vote on it tonight.
There has to be a motion.
Can I add a comment to this discussion?
Yeah.
There's a motion on the table.
Oh, sorry.
So the motion is to ten forty-five.
Support.
Well, no, it's already been moved in seconded.
Oh. Support. Support. Andrew's support.
Okay. I didn't hear, I didn't hear the second for the motion, but uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Okay. So, uh, what I was going to say was um, that you know, I understand um, where a lot of the citizens are coming from as far as their businesses and things like I get it. Like, I could not, I could not practice my brokerage for the first three or four months of the pandemic and then a car hit my office, so I really couldn't work. Um, and then, uh, you know, obviously, the, you know, the brewery can, you know, couldn't do much. We had to completely change our business model. Um, but you know what? It's, as hard as that is and as hard as it was to manage staff and keep everyone paid and find enough for everyone to do, um, so that we wouldn't have to permanently fire people. Um, it was way easier than had we not done all that, because it's really hard to make, as hard as it is to make money during the pandemic. It's really hard to make money if all your customers are dead. And looking at the average, and granted, testing was not great at the beginning, but but two days after the shutdown, looking at our new case numbers and the, the new case numbers and the seven-day average today, it's not that much different. So I, I don't see why there's panic in the beginning and celebration right now when we're at basically the same point, maybe a little worse. Um, we, I'm, it ju- it's, it freaks me out a little bit that we're that, that people think this is over. Um, and we risk taking, you know, a step forward and then another two back. You know, it's like we're jumping over dollars to pick up pennies here. And I'm, I'm really kind of concerned because I, I personally, um, and the people that work for me cannot afford to go, to stay on this merry-go-round. You know, we've got to do what's necessary to end it entirely. Um, so maybe, you know, it might be good, because I also understand some of the concerns that it seems um, it seems a little random, because we, we're all kind of feeling our way around in the dark, everyone. You know, that's one thing all humanity has in common right now. Um, so maybe it would be useful if we set some sort of target, maybe you know, a steady seven-day average over, you know, over a month or a um, a, you know, state-reported um, total vaccination rate or, or a county-reported vaccination rate or some, some kind of metric that people could look to and say, we're getting closer or we're getting further away or something. And I, I understand those points. Um, but yeah, I guess, I mean, I, I guess I don't have a really like a right answer here. I, I don't think anyone does, but I don't know, it freaks me out a little bit. Um, I, I'm not sure that I'm actually ready to make a change right now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Simmons?
Can I go after Jennifer, please? So, um, I mean, I, I think, I think I really appreciate a lot of things that uh, Steve had to say and I found them, you know, compelling. And um, you know, I appreciate um, Mr. Jones Chance, your comments as well. I mean, I was very open to considering, um, you know, having this discussion tonight. And I was reluctant i- in some ways to, to say no um, events this summer, at least for smaller ones that were outdoors. Um, but uh, and you know, and I am very conservative with this stuff. I mean, I think I'll be wearing a mask, you know, going forward in my that just because it seems to make some sense from, uh, you know, the flu and things like that. Um, I, I'm wondering if at this point though, is it kind of a moot point to talk about this? Um, because it seems like a lot of the events have found other places to go. And so I'm wondering, you know, we're talking about a summer season and, and, uh, you know, I don't know, you know, is there really any, anyone who's gonna, you know, who's still planning and doesn't have a venue that, that would be coming back? So, I mean, I, I guess I'm wondering, you know, if this really is kind of a moot point at this, at this stage of the game too. And so, you know, might not really matter to some, to a certain extent. Can I, can I just add? I talked to the folks who run, typically run some of the car shows at Riverside. And they are not planning on putting any of that back together this year. And I also saw that Beer Fest like announced, I don't know, it was kind of weird. Like, usually they announce months in advance, but just announced that they weren't having it in Ipsy because of our policy, which is kind of funny, because they, they weren't even considering having it. So I kind of, I don't know. I say all that to say, I still stand by what I said a few months ago. I think our public park should remain open and accessible to residents in this time of transition. And I don't think that we should have to worry about policing people who um, aren't going to wear masks and didn't get vaccinated and we're not going to know if they have or not, so. Like to remain, I'd like our parks to remain wide open for residents right now. That's my
Anyone else? Okay, is your hand up, Mr. uh, Jones Chance?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that I, I a hundred percent agree with um, Ms. Somerville on the, the public parks remaining public. You know, it's we've all got to make some sacrifices. And you know, Beer Fest is the biggest weekend for us of the year, with, with the exception of maybe you know, a few days before Christmas, right? Um, and yeah, it sucks, but I'm alive. You know, no, nobody in my staff got COVID. Um, so I don't know, I guess, I don't know, I, I agree with what you said. The parks should need to be for the public and there's a million other reasons why. Maybe we should, it's okay to be cautious.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Morgan, is your hand up or?
It, it is. Like I say, I, I do think this is a, to talk about, that's why I said this, uh, what Jennifer said, being a moot point. I, I think it's a case-by-case basis. I mean, uh, some of the biggest ones already withdrew. We've already done, uh, well, from what we've already voted on, people knew it was a deterrent, like coming here to Ipsy. So, um, to go back on that, I think we'll be moving backwards. Um, and again, we have a long pandemic to go, regardless of the stages we're in and the information that we're getting. So, um, uh, erring on the side of caution, it won't hurt anything at this hour. Um, that's in my opinion. So, uh, since we, are we calling the question or is it just a discussion? Anything anyway, with that, my two cents. But I'm glad, I'm glad everyone shared their, their thoughts on it. So.
Okay. I just uh, wanted us with the changes that were, were made. I thought we should, you know, at least discuss it. Uh, I totally agree with everything that everyone has said. Uh, I did not bring this forth to really um, pushing or hoping for a change. I have already probably declared that I'll probably be wearing my mask until twenty-two. I have, I'm fully um, vaccinated. I have, I'm fully um vaccinated, but um. The virus is still out there. This past weekend, there were uh. Just a little over thirty new cases in Washtenaw County. And there were six hospitalizations. The virus is still alive and well and it's out there, so. I think that we're uh I'm glad that everyone uh does agree that we need to just maintain what we have. Let our parks be for our residents and that we just keep them um keep them open, so. Thank you. Okay, Mister Helanga, we can move on.
Next item on the agenda is Boarding Commission's nominations. There are two nominations, one to the DDA. Brian Foley and then one to the HDC, Stefan's and Stefan's. Um and then the section after that is Boarding Commission Report, first being Police Advisory Commission.
Thank you. Um the last meeting was April twentieth, the the next meeting would be uh Thursday, May twenty-seventh. And I do believe um there there's a pretty uh stealthy agenda coming up. It's gonna be a few discussions um. Talking about policing and and in different forms of um crime in the city um. I I can look to it um and I'll send the agenda to some of you, but I know o- only if you know, a few of you can come. I I do believe uh. In conjunction with the Y-PAC is um the 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 Violence Work Group that myself. Mayor Pro Tim and um Mister Jones Chance have been a part of. They'll be on the agenda for this uh uh week, next Thursday. Twenty-seven, I believe that's next Thursday. Um and so it's a lot of interesting things happening and um. If I go to my notes, um I can send them, I can send some of the notes via um email. A specific of from from the agenda for Y-PAC um. Again, um I think Heather uh had got on the call earlier. Um no, I think um Renee had got on the call earlier mentioning Heather. Being the new chair and uh I think I mentioned that Gail being the vice chair, um having some new direction, having new um inspiration and and um. And I think they're making some um some credible motions um and some conversations that hadn't had happened and I'm looking forward to. To uh doing more work with them in the future.
Thank you.
Next is Human Relations Commission.
Yes, the Human Relations Commission met um last week and worked on um goals. And just their overarching priorities um with the new members that have been introduced and finally having enough folks to actually have a meeting. And so um at this point, they are, you know, creating goals and will finalize those things. Um and I will continue to support them and bring information back to council as necessary.
Thank you.
Next up is Arts Commission.
My bad, they're meeting this week.
Next is Parks and Rec.
Um it's me um this past week um. Parks and Rec met, uh I made a presentation about the dam. I enlisted the help of uh. Tried to enlist the help of the Parks and Rec Commission to have a vision for the uh. Expansion of of Penn Park. Not great reception of that. I met with Bonnie Westler afterwards and she gave me a few pointers on how to motivate commissioners. Um so I will, I will follow up with them. Uh one of the other issues on the uh the agenda was uh Kiwanis. Uh is um dedicating a a boulder with a plaque. Um of their hundred years of service to the to the community and that'll be placed uh. Uh outside the fence near the pool. Um and that'll happen, Bill Nichols, uh former council member uh. Was made that presentation. One of the um. One of the issues this year with the pandemic was there's there's typically a Huron River Day. In the in the spring and in the fall and the way that's working this year is is a Huron River Day every day. And so they have a a set of programs that uh. You know, people can do on on any day that they want want to do it, it's um. Wraps up on the thirty-first. Um I can I can forward information on where you can get that. And just acknowledgement that there have been a lot of volunteer uh cleanups in the parks. Um there was a group of students from EMU that did Riverside Park. And so um. We're working on Prospect Park and uh the Water Street Trail as well, so. That's it.
Hey Steve, um Anthony and I are trying to have a cleanup day at our ward, so maybe we can team up.
That'd be great. I wanna do a a canoe cleanup of the river. There's a lot of stuff down. Um that you can't get to from shore. Um and I've got some other folks and uh Daniel Brown from the um. The Watershed Council was was looking to have a day of of surveying the river and things like that, but I think I I used to participate on these in uh. In Ann Arbor and I'd like to get a flotilla of canoes to help clean up the river um.
Sweet. Yeah, I volunteer, Anthony and I will follow up.
Next commission is sustainability.
Oh, that's me too. Uh let's see, uh get my notes here. This is a long meeting and it it was mostly taken up with uh um presentations. Uh. There's a uh woman, Kalen Cole Hazel, who um is a renter and she's she's trying to start a program in which. Uh renters who know about gardening can can um coordinate with with homeowners and landowners. That don't have the time or the capacity or the ability to do gardening, to have like front yard gardenings and the the model is basically that. The person who owns the land gets a third of the crop, the person who uh uh does the gardening gets a third of it and then a third of it would go to the community. Um there were lots of concerns about how these front yard gardens would conform to uh our code. Or visibility and you know. Various other forms. Uh Commissioner Collins uh made presentations on on stormwater. Um and uh composting. He's a farmer that educates a lot of um. People of different ages. Um and so he gave that presentation. Um. And then there was a presentation from um. Rye Fielder, uh who is a. A staff person for Magic and Thrive and it's an alliance uh for justice and climate. Um it's a number of uh it's an alliance of of different kinds of organization, the organizations from around the state that have come together. Um to to do work on justice and climate change. And there's um mini-grants that are available, well, not mini-grants, I mean, there are grants available for a number of different uh. Uh types of projects and this is all being administered through the uh Interfaith Council for Peace and Justice. Um Commissioner Desiree Simmons on the Sustainability Commission is a a co um. Director for that organization and so there was information presented there on how communities like our own. Um can get money from that that coalition uh to do various projects, so. And that's it.
Thank you.
Next item is HDC.
Nothing to report.
We may have to extend the meeting again. I'm almost certain to eleven o'clock. I make a motion to. I make a motion to ten fifty-nine. Did you support that, Steve? I can hear you.
I'll support.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Hey, uh all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, thank you. Okay.
Next up is Planning Commission.
Uh Planning Commission has not met since our last meeting. They will meet tomorrow and uh I'll jump the gun here, zoning. Um will meet on the twenty-sixth.
Okay, until Liaison Reports, first being SEMCAG.
Uh no report, thank you.
Transportation Study.
Yeah, actually we have a meeting tomorrow, so nothing to report at this time.
Urban County.
Uh, nothing to report.
DDA.
We have a meeting on Thursday, but I wanted to bring to everyone's attention, we're having a pop-up vaccination clinic on North Washington tomorrow. From four to six and so very happy to welcome the county out to the street closure area. And uh get folks vaccinated downtown. Oh, um we're offering the first fifty vaccinated ten dollar gift cards to local businesses as well.
Chris, when they um are, do you know which vaccine they're gonna be giving?
Yeah, they have a choice between Moderna or Johnson and Johnson.
Okay, so for the Moderna, since this is a pop-up clinic, are you going to have the the same have it the same ta-? Same time in two weeks, so they can get the second because they have to follow up.
We leave it up to the person who gets vaccinated to schedule a second appointment. Um there are no commitments from the county to come back in two weeks, although we hope to have them back many more times over the summer. And I hope we have a great turnout and we show it's justified to do it down here.
Okay, I I'm I'm glad you're having it down there, but I just, you know. Concerned about the people coming back and getting their second, you know, second dose. And if you can go, if you're going back to the same place, it's easy. To remember because I can see some people coming for the ten dollar gift card, but then. You know, not coming back or going someplace else, find another place for the second, so.
I think, just to add, I think what the Health Department does, though, they do basically require people, like they don't force them, but like part of like the. I'm everybody kind of knows if they went through the Health Department like I like I did, I know Lois did. Um they make you sign up for the second dose while you're there on your phone. So hopefully, I mean, I would imagine. They made everybody at the clinic that I went to in the township.
Hmm, okay. No, I didn't have to do that, sign up, but uh. Some people aren't going back for their seconds. That's the reason I, yeah, okay.
Item is Friends of Rutherford Pool.
Uh it's me again. Um they're moving ahead with plans to open, as I had mentioned earlier, they're uh in, they've got. Staff hired through the city, they've gone through that whole uh process for their their guards and things like that. They have a an intern or a a full-time person that will be monitoring people as they come in before they get to the pool. And then um be maintaining social distancing and and uh appropriate uh. Well, now masking uh within the pool. Uh they're getting the solar panels are getting put on uh in a couple of weeks. Uh there's a work party for that, so I'm gonna volunteer for that. Um and I think it's it.
Next item is Council Proposed Business.
Um I'm sorry, I got another text from someone about this meeting. Mister Jones Chance, please.
Um, yeah, uh the uh Violence Working Group posted a town hall. Um last weekend or two weekends ago. Um got a lot of useful feedback. We're looking to do another one on, we're gonna do another one on the twenty-ninth. Um in the mid-afternoon and then the Affordable Housing Working Group is doing a renters-only. Um town hall earlier in the afternoon on the same Saturday because um I should not be doing my own scheduling. Um I also wanna uh thank um Mister Brian Foley and Mister Brad Holman for helping out with the overturned. Uh Porta John and the Pavilion at. Park Ridge Park over the weekend. Um I didn't make it, I didn't even make it back there in time to watch, so um they handle it. And um. Actually, I think that is all. Um I've. I've got a question for Mr. Akers, but I'll wait till he's uh back from vacation.
City Manager McMillan.
Yes, um Mister Jones Chance, do you have um minutes or any kind of report from your last town hall on violence?
Yeah, I think Ms. Brown and I both took notes. Hers are probably better than mine. Oh, and we would actually like to schedule um something with staff to maybe talk about what you've already done and um. I don't know, it feels really good to be working on it, so hopefully we we all get somewhere.
Could we ask that committee and staff to prepare a a report for council for the next meeting? Just to keep council abreast on what's happening, please, thank you.
I'm sure staff could. I'm not sure of the rules of uh about uh the council work group doing it. Um I I don't know, it seems like it might be safer to keep it as informal as possible.
Right, and I don't mean, I'm not asking uh that the the informal council group. Report formally, but if you're meeting with staff and sharing things, then staff can give the report or but. Or has been, as has been done before, one of the, one of you as council can step away from your council seat. And give the report. So you're reporting as a resident citizen, not council.
I think we can meet as a a smaller work group and discuss how we want to do that. Uh I don't want to report anything prematurely as we're trying to gather information right now. A robust report, but I think once we get the information we're looking for and start working on that, then we can report out um even in writing, what we've been, maybe in writing.
Okay, I just want to keep council, you know, abreast if you can. All right, thank you. Uh, okay, let's see. Uh Mister uh Wilcoxen.
I don't have any uh business at this time, but I do want to give a shout out to Christopher Jacobs for all the time that he's put in on the dam work. Um he and I have a weekly meeting with the Huron River Watershed Council and he or Scott Slager are are there. And I've had a lot of conversations with him in the last two weeks that I really appreciate, so I just wanted to say thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh Mister Morgan.
Thank you. Uh really short, really short. Um I was a part of the YCUA. Um I'm on the Water Advisory Board and just. Uh just a few highlights. Um according to the LCR, the lead copper rule of twenty eighteen that um. The the YCUA are doing, they have to identify the service lines um. That have a lead, copper, or galvanized metal in them and they're on target. Um they identified over twenty-eight hundred and they're on target to. To do five percent of those over the next twenty years um. And uh with the Great Lakes Water Authority has out been doing testing. Um once some of these uh changes have been made um to test the water and retest. Um to keep, to make sure that the the quality of is less than, the quality of, I think lead is less than fifteen parts per billion. Um which is non-detectable in our water, so we they want to be reminded that there's no lead in our water, which is awesome. Um and they're just doing a great job over there. Um but this is why I brought up the thing about the sports today. I I I took a small nap after, and this is not um. It's not cute at all, but again, um I got a call from somebody from Celine um. And they just asking me about the program and I guess they they competed against this Lanny's baseball team. Um and they played two different games and I guess the first game was like sixteen zip, second game was like thirty zip. And I didn't, and they can't, like there's no JV team, it's just one team of eleven players total. And you take nine people, nine players to field the, so if two people got hurt, they probably couldn't have a season. But it's up and they and these people from a different place, just giving input on, they wanted to start a program on how to, these people from Celine want to start. Um fun, getting fundraisers to clothe and uh and equip our players. And I felt so like that's a great. Like, that's a great thing, but that's something we should be doing, but it's something that the school should be taking care of, but the fact that the morale of the team, and I used to coach teams at Ipsy. And at Rudolph Steiner, and when you're undersized, when you're not, and again, the lady had mentioned, like, there was just no parents. Um, you know, the coaches working so hard to pick the kids, so I was just like this, how we look outside and just, I know that, like I said, the morale. Of these young people who compete and who train in, who probably looking to um get out of some of the circumstances due to sports and just to not have that available or um. It's 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 kind of um, it's just, it's hard to to listen to and it's even harder to watch, I'm sure, knowing how how much Islamic, especially when they were the Braves and then they were the Phoenix and now the Grizzlies. How much they care and invested in their sports and so it is a family thing and so I just want to help them reclaim the status. Uh, just. Um, young people being able to have viable sports programs to and have an attractive sports program, that's very important and so. Um, that's what was the basis of some of the um allocations for funding that I I thought was important and so um. I just want to thank staff and I um thank the council for supporting that. I have no further business.
All right, thank you. Um, Ms. Simmons.
Yeah, thanks. I'll make it super quick because of time. Um, we had a incident in College Heights. I've been getting a lot of questions about it. I was hoping to get uh any other updates that were available and uh Chief, I sent you an email last week. Um, if you get a chance to just uh give me a quick answer. Um, if there's nothing to share, that's okay. Um, but that's basically it, so thanks.
Did you want to share the incident with council?
Oh, it was a shooting?
Okay.
Yeah.
Is, was that the one on college uh on College Wood?
Yeah, yeah, just, you know, people are asking, just wondering about updates and things and I understand that. There's not always information to share, but uh if there was, that would be appreciated and if not, that's okay, just let me know.
There will be something forthcoming. Um, we're we're coming to a conclusion, investigation, but um if it's helpful, it it was. It wasn't planned to have happened in that area. It was kind of a car chase that ended up there and the chaseee ended up. Because they weren't familiar with the area going down a one-way street and that's why, or a dead-end street actually, uh and that's why it ended up happening there, but it wasn't anything related to the neighborhood itself.
No, yeah, and I think I think uh folks understand that, they're just uh that it was kind of a chance incident, but uh, you know, they're just wondering, so. So thanks. Look forward to the update.
All right, thank you. Um, council member, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Brown.
Um, briefly, uh, want to thank Brian and Brad absolutely for their help in Park Ridge Park and to let folks know that there will be a community cleanup. At Parker's Park on Saturday at twelve noon. Um, folks will be gathering at the pavilion uh and I will email out anything else that I have, questions for staff. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, council member, um, Somerville.
Hi, yes, um, one announcement, I want to make sure I get the information correct. Um. Mark Higby, who is a professor at E M U, is going to be hosting a conversation at the Highland um Cemetery. I believe on the twenty-fifth of this month, which is a Tuesday, um. Let's see, Tuesday, May twenty-fifth at ten A M for about thirty-five minutes at the chapel. Um, just about some history on um the black soldiers of the Civil War that are buried there and the creation of Memorial Day. I will double check. Part of me thinks this might be happening on Memorial Day and he just gave me the wrong date. Um, so I'll confirm that and then email everybody, but I just wanted to flag it in case anyone was interested. Um, I got to go inside the chapel this week and it was really nice, so if you have a chance to check it out, um, I would also encourage that. Um, in terms of other stuff. Um, I don't have a whole lot. I just want to thank staff for all their hard work with the complicated issues that arise with the street closures. Um, I'm glad we resolved the conflict with the music. Um, dates and I appreciate all of your hard work that you'll continue to do all summer. Um, yeah, and I just. Happy that we were able to make it through the budget as a team, so that's all I have.
Hey, thank you. Uh, can we please have a uh motion to extend the meeting, please? We have four minutes left and we're not going to, we will go past the four.
We can do it. Let's do it.
I move to extend until eleven fifteen.
Thank you. Is there a second to that?
Support.
Right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose?
Aye.
Come on, we can make this a six-hour meeting. Come on, we can rally.
I think the ayes have it, okay. All right, um, I think I'm up next. Um. Um, I attended the um. Oh, the school, the Y C S um arts depart- art department. Um, program that uh reception that they had at um Riverside Arts on last uh Friday or Friday before last, I guess it was. Uh, it was all about the banners. It was, it was very nice and um the the little park area there outside of um. Riverside was full with, full of people. It was well-attended. Uh, and they had food and and whatnot. Uh, it was a nice um Congresswoman Dingle was there also. And it was a nice little um, little program. Um. On, this is just an announcement, but um we might, I'm throwing it out here so that people that. Residents that do read and keep up with our minutes can see it. Uh, on June twenty-sixth. At Ipsy High School, the Rotary Club will be having a shred e- uh shred event that will be a fundraiser and. Um, I have the prices right, it's ten dollars for uh they, what they call a banker's box, so if we do that. Um, the uh executive board of the Michigan Black Caucus of locally elected officials, we had a. Uh, special presentation. There was a uh presentation at the M M L convention last year on community wealth building. And um, the, as I said, the N B C Leo, we had a special session with the people that presented it because. Uh, none of us got to attend that and uh our session initially was to be one, but it ended up being two because. When we got into it, it was so much material coming from out of us, the people that were there. I would really like uh for council. To um have a uh special session with council members and staff uh on community wealth building. It really is. Interesting and it is um something that I think would be good for for our city. Uh, and the wealth building is not all built around uh finances, but it's actually making a wealthy city. Out of what we have to work with the, for over, for the past decade or longer, the M M L has really been focusing on. Uh, placemaking and so the wealth building, community wealth building also has to do with placemaking. And with the residents within the city, so I would like to see, and I'm throwing it out here, if council would be interested. Uh, it is interesting and I think that uh we, it would benefit us to he- help us to benefit our city uh going forward.
Mayor, can can we extend the meeting a little bit more?
You're a little bit late.
Oh, somebody did it. All right, cool. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Sorry to interrupt.
No problem. Um, the other thing is on um, there will be a food distribution. Uh, presented by the Power of Life Foundation. They're out of Birmingham, uh uh Birmingham, Alabama. They called me a few days or a week after we declared the last state of emergency wanting to uh come. The. Uh, one of the founders is from this area. His name is Lane Harper. And he uh was a graduate of Pioneer, but did spend uh quite a bit of time, time here in the city of Islamic. And uh have been talking with them and they were um, wanted to uh bring food. They have done this across the. The southeastern uh corner of the state of of the United States and uh in talking with them, they wanted to. Um, also include uh Islamic community schools and in I contacted Taryn Willison in meeting with them. We wanted uh the the pro uh them to have the distribution at Perry, but they uh determined that that parking lot was not large enough for. Uh, for what they wanted to do, so it's going to be held at the um. Islamic High School, um, Islamic Community High School and with that being in the township, but they still wanted to partner. With the city of Islamic and I talked with Mr. Uh, Mr. Bauer and with it being in the township. We thought it best if uh I agree, I had agreed too, because their original uh was, question was that if I, as mayor, would partner with them, so. I've agreed to do that and I'm sharing all of this because the the flyers will be be released in the next couple of days. There will be a. Press release that uh that comes out around the first of June, but I wanted you to be familiar with it before all of that happened. Uh, special thanks to Mr. Akers and his staff for the cleanup that was done at um Perry. Uh, Perry School, I mean Perry, um Park Ridge Park and then extended all the way to uh down into the Perry uh parking lot, so. Uh, I, someone sent me pictures of the number of cars that were there and I don't know how, uh, Chief, I'm glad you're still here, maybe we can. You can think of some way that we can or begin to work on some way that we can uh stop that. I know that there were well over fifty people. In the park. Uh, I did send you pictures also, pictures to the city manager and the clerk and the two. Ward representatives and the um, the trash that was there. They've uh, I know that we requested new trash. I mean, extra trash cans at all of the pavilions and um this past weekend really proved that we we need them. Uh, I don't know if everyone received the letter from the resident around Recreation Park and. The pictures that she sent regarding the, all the trash that was there, so, but I want to thank um Mr. Akers again, like I said, him and his uh. His staff for the work that they did in cleaning up the parks. I was at uh Recreation Park on Monday was uh look, was also at um. Drove through Park Ridge Park on uh Monday also and it was well cleaned except for the. The outhouse being turned over and um it was set straight back up, but if you, Chief, could begin to think about some kind of ways that we can get some. Uh, some better grip on what's going on in the parks on Saturday evenings and into Sundays. It would really, it would really help because. This wasn't, I guess, the Sunday, the weekend before also, uh, Mr. Brown had uh. Given us a report that there were excessive number of people there at Park Ridge Park, so uh we could work on that and um. Thanks to all the staff for all that you're doing. Appreciate the work that you're doing to help us move forward in the city. Thank you. City manager, I'll turn it over to you. First of all, I'd like to thank council for passing the budget on tonight. Um, I'll just keep it short. Um, just want to inform you that. Myself and staff will be meeting with the developers of the Water Street property um on this Thursday. It's gonna be an in-person. Meeting and we're looking to have them possibly before council, uh maybe the second meeting in June, but we'll finalize those things on Thursday. That's it. Okay, any communication, Mr. Uh, Helanga?
No, there are no communications. Uh, next item is adjourned.
All right, uh, I declare the meeting adjourned. Mr. Burr, did you have something?
No, just.
No. Okay, I declare this meeting adjourned. Everyone have a good night, stay safe, stay well.
Good night, everyone.